We'll call this meeting to order tonight. First item is roll call.
Councilmember San Antonio.
President.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara is not here, but we will note when he is present. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers.
Here. And so tonight, we'll get right to it, but first, I just want to go through an announcement. We've got -- I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. It's a large crowd, and I want to ensure everyone is aware of the rules of decorum. Adherence to these rules is critical to running a safe, effective, and efficient meeting. So the purpose of these rules is so that everyone has an opportunity to speak without being interrupted, intimidated, or shouted at. Please follow these rules and guidelines. Failure to comply will be grounds for removal of the offending audience members. And the policy and procedures governing our meetings are codified in City Policy C-003. Included in this policy are the following rules, amongst many others, but I want to highlight a couple. Cheering, shouting, disruptive behaviors shall not be tolerated. The Chair, the Mayor, may direct appropriate remedial action if necessary. And it provides guidelines also, in addition to rules, for council and speaker communication. Address the council as a body, not individuals. Respect. Be courteous, professional, and respective. And ultimately, we have to balance the First Amendment right of free speech versus the collective need to conduct our meetings fairly and efficiently. Please join me in making this a safe, effective meeting where differing opinions can safely and calmly be espoused, and all sides may be respectfully heard. Thank you. And with that, we have one item tonight. And tonight's item is to provide direction on the design revision options for and completion of the Santa Fe Drive Western Phase. CS 19E is the budget number. And the contact person is Bader, but I see Bader is not here, so I'll recognize staff and start with Dan Nutter, Director of Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and esteemed councilmembers. My name is Dan Nutter. I'm the Director of Engineering and City Engineer. And with me tonight, I have Matt Madowski. He's a principal engineer, and he is the manager of our capital improvement program. I also have Jay Sworm, who is our Assistant City Manager. And, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, unfortunately, Bader Solomon, who's one of our engineers, he's put a lot of really good time and effort into helping prepare us for this presentation. He had an unfortunate death in his family Monday morning, so he's not with us today.
Sorry to hear that.
But do want to recognize all of his efforts in putting this together. So with that, I'd like to turn the mic over to Matt for us to jump into our presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Again, as we jump in here, the Santa Fe Drive corridor project, the project runs from Interstate Five all the way to El Camino Real. We have a western phase, and we have an eastern phase, as we see on the map. I know this is background. Most of you know this, but wanted to make sure everybody was aware and reminded of this as we go. The section we're talking about tonight is the western phase, which is in the blue over here, which is El Camino Real to Evergreen Drive. That was designated as basically the separation point between the western and the eastern phase. Currently, what we have is an interim condition out on the corridor right now. We have completed contiguous sidewalks from Interstate Five almost all the way to Evergreen Drive. We have installed separated bike lanes in the vicinity of the Sandagito Campus. We did upgrade two NCTD bus stops in vicinity of the campus. Oh, sorry about that. We've installed reverse angle parking in vicinity of Sandagito Campus along with the striping enhancements. We have installed landscape irrigation, and we've installed bio basins for stormwater compliance. And we've installed an RRFB at the mid-block crossing for the high school. That's what the interim condition we have right now is out on the corridor. Two items that were not completed, just wanted to quickly mention right now. The two intersections at Nardo McKinnon and then at Benita Windsor were not completed with the contract we had going on. And then, east of Benita Windsor on the north side, we did not install the dedicated westbound bike lane from Evergreen Drive over to the intersection at Benita Windsor. So we want to take a bit to dive into what the corridor actually looks like. What you're looking at here on the top is a street mix view. It's called a typical section, where you can see the cars and the bike lane, where it would be. The lower exhibit is an actual picture view from Google, where if you're actually driving on the street. So, west of Nardo McKinnon, if we are facing east, just wanted to explain, what we have today is we have two 10-foot travel lanes with sheroes, and we have a 10-foot turn lane. On the south side, we have an elevated bike lane next to a sidewalk. On the north side, we have a two-foot buffer striping with a flexi-post with a six-foot bike lane on the north side of the road, and the existing sidewalk has been there ever since before the project started. So that's what we have on this section of the corridor today. As we move to the center section, this is in vicinity of the high school, we have two 10-foot lanes with a shero and a 10-foot turn lane right now. To the south, we have reverse angle parking that's been installed with the landscaping and the bio basins for the stormwater. The separated bike lane continues further south and is separated from the parking with a three-foot planter, and the existing sidewalk is all the way on the south. On the north of the travel lane, we have reverse angle parking that has been installed and a six-foot separated bike lane separated with the planter in vicinity of the school. And then we have the sidewalk all the way at the northern end of the corridor. So this is what exists today. And the third section, if we get east of Benita Windsor, what we have today, to the south, is we have two 10-foot travel lanes with the shero. We have the 10-foot turn lane. We have a two-foot buffer striping with the flexi-post and a six-foot wide bike lane and a recently installed sidewalk on the south side. This sidewalk did not exist prior to the project. And the north side is the same as it was prior to the project, because nothing was done over here. So this is all the existing, how the corridor looks today. As was briefly mentioned, there were some items that were de-scoped. The two pieces were the two intersections. Work was supposed to be done, and that work did get removed, and we have to complete this work. We need to construct the ADA compliant curb ramps. We have to install the striping to get the bicyclists and the pedestrians safely through the intersections. And there are some poles that need to be relocated with the intersection design. So, staff does recommend we have to complete this work. The second area, as you see, this is the area east of Benita Windsor on the north side of the road. Currently, at the edge of the road, there's a landscaping vegetated area here next to the adjacent sidewalk, and this is where the bike lane was supposed to be installed, but that work was, again, de-scoped from the project. So the concept is, we have the travel lane, we have the Class II bike lane, and we have the sidewalk all the way in the end. And utilities and some drainage structures need to be relocated to connect it back up to the intersection. So back in May, many of us were here. The City Council directed the staff to look at some various design options and return back to council with some options of what to do. First option was looking at parallel parking with separated bike lane, and this is in vicinity of the high school, between Nardo McKinnon and Benita Windsor. Second option was parallel parking with a buffered bike lane on the south side only, keeping the separated bike lane on the north side. And the third option was having head-in angle parking as opposed to reverse angle parking, keeping the separated bike lanes on the north and the south side of this section of the corridor. The council also directed the staff to put street-level bike lanes west of Nardo McKinnon on the south side, and then northeast of Benita Windsor on the north side of the road. Those were areas that the council directed the staff to pursue. And lastly, the council directed the staff to look at improving the intersections so that they would work with any of the options that we were pursuing. As well as the council directing the staff to look at these design options, they designed -- they told the staff to pursue some safety improvements on the corridor immediately to help improve the usability out there. Specifically, if you see on this picture in the upper right, signing and striping has been added recently, in the last three months, to the corridor to help improve safety and users on the corridor. The post office required cluster boxes to be installed to return the delivery to the residents out there, and that has been accomplished, which we are happy for. During the construction, there were some boulders installed with the landscaping, and recently, we've relocated them away from the bike path, because they were relatively close to the bike path now. On this lower right picture, you see, this is the curb ramp at the southeast corner of McKinnon and Santa Fe. Recently, our Public Works crew did go out and improve this curb ramp, and it makes it much easier for bicyclists to get to the separated bike lane and for pedestrians to get to the sidewalk in this interim condition now, until we can put the final intersection improvements in. And lastly, at the westbound bus pad, there was an SDGNE vault that needed to be lowered. We finally got that done over this summer, and so now that tripping hazard has been eliminated, which we're happy for. Lastly, we have been looking at doing design modifications to the asphalt bike path and the driveway to the high school. These are still in the works, and we're trying to get those brought to the corridor as soon as we can. Okay. Everybody who looked at Attachment A, looked at all the exhibits we had, so we want to try and explain to everybody a little bit of how the attachments need to be read and how you can try and understand everything we put on them. When we talk about areas of the corridor, we have the area west of Nardo McKinnon, which generally is here between Gardena and Nardo McKinnon. If we are talking between Nardo McKinnon and Benita Windsor, we're talking in vicinity of the high school, where the school and the churches are located. And if we are saying we are east of Benita Windsor, that section of the corridor goes from Benita Windsor over to Evergreen Drive. So when you see the titles of where you are, this is what it means where you are in the corridor. When you look at the exhibits, you'll see a typical section on top in a plan view, or could be mixed around. So again, a typical section is assume you are standing in the center of the lane, and you're always going to be facing east in these typical sections. So that's what you want to look at. So north will be to your left, and south will be to your right. And in all the plan views that we have, it's called a bird's eye view, what we have, you pretend like you're 100 feet above the ground, looking down. North is always going to be to the top, and south will be to the bottom, which means west is always going to be to the left side of your page, and east will be to the east side. So hopefully, that clarifies any questions people had while they were reading the exhibits. Last thing we had, when you see areas of red hatching, that signifies a proposed change that the staff is proposing to the existing condition. And if you see an area of gray hatching, that means that section of the corridor should remain the same. So, red means proposed changes, gray means areas should remain the same. Since we talked about the three areas of the corridor, there are some where the options of proposed changes we have are going to be the same for every option. When we look at the area west of Nardo McKinnon, that option will be the same for all three options we have for the center section. And when we look at the area east of Benita Windsor, that proposed solution will be the same for all three options that we have proposed. So just want to make sure everybody realizes, you're going to see three options. West of Nardo McKinnon and east of Benita Windsor will always be the same. There's one option. So let's talk about the proposed changes staff requests for, or is proposing for the area west of Nardo McKinnon. Again, if we are facing east, looking at the typical section, and then we have our plan view down here. The staff is proposing to lower the elevated bike lane down to the same elevation as the travel lane, keeping the sidewalk six inches above to the very south. And the staff is also proposing to remove the two-foot striping on the north bike lane and remove the flexi-post. This will allow the travel lanes and the turn lane to each have 11 feet of distance, and the sidewalk on the north side will be the same as it always has. The area east of Benita Windsor, right now, the staff is proposing to remove the two-foot striping and the flexi-post for the south side bike lane and reduce that width from six to five feet, keeping the newly installed sidewalk on the south side. This will allow the road to have 11 feet for both driving lanes and the 11-foot turn lane. And then here on the northern section of this part of the corridor, we are proposing to scooch the curb and gutter northerly so that the Class II bike lane can be installed adjacent to the travel lane, and the existing sidewalk, which is offset now, can be adjacent to the bike lane. And that will all tie into the proposed intersection improvement on the northeast corner of Benita Windsor. Okay. Now we're getting to the meat and potatoes now. We had three options that the staff was asked to analyze, three of them A, B, C. Option A is parallel parking with keeping the separated bike lanes. This allows for 11-foot travel lanes and the separated bike lanes, both on the north and south side, in vicinity of the school. And what we wanted to point out is, before we did any project work, there were 35 parking spaces on this section of the road. After we've done the interim condition, there are 46 parking spaces with the reverse angle parking. So with Option A, we believe we can get 41 to 44 parallel parking spaces if we do the parallel parking, keeping the separated bike lanes. If we look at Option B, that is parallel parking with installing a buffered bike lane on the south side of the corridor, but keeping the separated bike lane on the northern section along the high school. This option will give us 11-foot travel lanes. It will keep the continuous eastbound Class II bike lane, and the parking count will be 44 to 47 spaces. And lastly, the head-in angle parking is head-in angle parking with keeping the separated bike lane on the south side and the north side of the corridor in vicinity of the high school, between Nardo McKinnon and Benita Windsor. We will get 11-foot travel lanes out of this, and we will have 50 to 52 parking spaces, we believe could be achieved from this alternative. What I want to do now is show the exhibits. These are of all the options, and I'm going to zoom in so that everybody can slowly see the entire corridor. This is the very western part by Interstate Five. This is the very eastern part of the corridor by Evergreen. Okay. Technology. Here we go. Everybody see that, hopefully decent enough. So again, this is the very western portion, the part west of McKinnon-Nardo, and we've expressed, we've kind of gone through this one already, where we lower the bike lane on the south side, and we remove the striping on the north side. We get 11-foot lanes, and we have the bike lanes both at the level of the travel lane. As we come easterly, we get through the intersection, McKinnon-Nardo, excuse me, and we get the bicyclists and the pedestrians down to the separated bike lane and the sidewalk on the south side. And here is where we start to convert the reverse angle parking to parallel parking on both the north and south side. And on all three of our options, this very S, this very sharp S curve that exists today, we are proposing to narrow it down and get the bicyclists into the sneaker lane here to help improve the safety and rideability of the corridor in this option. And this is Option A, everybody, just to make sure. So, we have parallel parking. We have two-foot buffers on each side of the parallel parking, which allow for doors to open and for pedestrians to walk around. We are proposing to install some cutouts in the landscaping areas to make it much easier for people that park in their car to walk to the sidewalk as we continue along. We see more pedestrian cutouts, and this is the exit for the high school right here, keeping the northbound separated bike lane intact. Southbound, we have the parallel parking. The new bus stop that has been installed remains as is. The existing mid-block crossing remains, but we intend to install impavement lighting to help with that crossing during evening and nighttime hours. Continuing east, we have parallel parking along the south side with the two-foot buffers on every side. Pedestrian cut-throughs to make sure it's easier for pedestrians to get to the sidewalk and maneuver around the corridor. And then as we get to Benita Windsor, we get through the intersection, and then this is the eastern part of Benita Windsor, which is the same for all three options, which we've talked about already. That is Option A. Option B, as we said, the very western part, west of McKinnon-Nardo, is the same as we've discussed. We come through the intersection at McKinnon-Nardo with our improvements, and here, we still have parallel parking, and we still are proposing to fix this very sharp S curve here on the north side to get bicyclists into the sneaker lane. We go to the parallel parking on the south side, and we install a buffered bike lane between the parking and the travel lane of the cars. And then, the separated bike lane on the south side would be converted into landscaping and bio basin area in order to meet the stormwater requirements, which we will need to do since we are adding or replacing impervious pavement on this project. On the north side, we still have the parallel parking by the track and field. As we come across, the separated bike lane stays on the north side. The buffered bike lane continues on the south side next to the parallel parking. As we get to the intersection of the high school, or the entrance to the high school, the bus stop does have to be relocated about three to four feet to the south, and the reason for that is because right now, the bus stop is next to the curb in front of the separated bike lane. So if the separated bike lane goes away, then the bus stop needs to get moved south to be next to the sidewalk. The mid-block crossing remains the same, and we plan to install impavement lighting. As we continue along, the north side has the separated bike lane. Parallel parking exists on the south side with the buffered bike lane taking everything through the intersection at Benita Windsor. And then we tie into the proposed improvements we've talked about east of Benita Windsor. So this is Option B, parallel parking with the buffered bike lane on the south side. And lastly, Option C. Very westerly, as we talked about, is the same. When we get through the intersection at Nardo McKinnon, we narrow down the S curve here. We get the bicyclists and the pedestrians to the separated bike lane, and we get them to the sidewalk here. And in this proposal, the reverse angle parking is changed to traditional head-in parking, which probably most people are used to. We achieve the 11-foot lanes on all of the travel lane and the turn lane as we continue along. And since the landscaping is removed, there isn't anything to step over. There's wheel stops at the front of the head-in parking, but there's much more room for pedestrians to walk to the sidewalk here, instead of having to step over the landscaping. As we get to the intersection, or the entrance to the high school, the bus stop remains the same. We plan to install the impavement lighting and keep the mid-block crossing. We have the separated bike lane on the north, and we have head-in angle parking along the south as we continue west, continue east, excuse me. And as we get up to Benita Windsor intersection, we tie into the proposed improvements we've talked about. That was Option C, or that is Option C. Okay. Now we're to the costs. Again, the costs we have that you've seen in the report and how we're showing here, these costs include the design, the construction, the inspection, and contingency for the project. So this is a total cost we are looking at. It is not just construction. Just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. For all of the options, as we discussed early, the staff recommends we need to do the intersection improvements, and we need to install that westbound bike lane east of Benita Drive. So we estimate the intersection improvements to be $1.2 million, and that westbound bike lane east of Benita Drive to be around $400,000. So that gives a subtotal on every option of $1.6 million initially. When we look at Option A's safety features, and that, again, this is parallel parking, keeping the separated bike lanes on both the north and south, that's, excuse me, that's a $1.4 million on top of the $1.6, so the total cost there is $2.9 to $3.1 million. For Option B, when you have the parallel parking with the buffered bike lane, the first two costs remain the same. The safety modifications with Option B are $1.9 million, because that is more, it's removing more of the landscaping areas and the parallel, or, excuse me, and the reverse angle parking in order to move the basins and the landscaping to where the separated bike lane is now. So that total is $1.9 million, and with the total for Option B, we're looking at $3.4 to $3.6 million. And lastly, Option C, with the head-in angle parking, we start with the $1.6 million for intersections and the bike lane. Option C's safety modifications, $1.3 million, so that gives us a total of $2.8 to $3 million for Option C. Right now, staff anticipates that we have about $4 million that will be available for either option that is selected, or any option that is selected tonight. So, three areas you can see up here is where the funding would come from. And lastly, Attachment Three of the agenda report talked about entitlement considerations. What we want to say is that, we spoke with the Development Services Department and the Planning Division. We routed all three of these options to that department, and they said that all options remain substantially consistent with the approved entitlements and do not alter or remove essential project elements. So what that means is, staff does not anticipate triggering a new coastal development permit, and we do not anticipate triggering a new design review process if we go with any of these three options. That is our presentation. Thank you, and we are standing by to answer questions and gather input from the public and take direction from the council.
Okay. We'll start with preliminary questions of clarification from the council.
I've got one.
Okay.
Just for Option A and C, do we keep the sheroes at heading eastbound?
So, we can't. So, for any area where we do have a separated bike facility, we can absolutely keep the sheroes. They do not have to go. To be honest, we, I know in our staff report, it did mention removal of sheroes. That would be a further refinement during the design phase, where we would make that final determination, but in all likelihood, there would still be sheroes where we have separated bike facilities.
So, Option A and C, keep the sheroes?
In all likelihood, yes.
And then Option B gets removed the sheroes?
On the eastbound direction.
Correct.
Because Option B does have a buffered bike lane, so we wouldn't have a shero with a buffered bike lane, but going westbound on the north side, we would have sheroes.
Copy.
Due to the fact that it's a separated bike lane on the north side.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a few questions, if nobody else. Councilmember San Antonio, you can go.
With the new housing developments coming in, is any of the, what we're, if any of these changes were made, is, we have to make any changes again to any of these egress and any of these entrances and exits?
So, essentially what happens is, whenever we do have a private development project coming through, we do a review to ensure that it is compatible with any capital project that we have moving forward. So, we are aware that there are private development projects that are coming forward. There is one in particular that is conditioned to do a full signal improvement at their project frontage, which is also the entrance to Sandagito Academy. So, we coordinate that with the private developer and ensure that it matches the improvements that we have proposed from a capital sampling.
Okay. Ayil.
Okay. And I, along the same lines, I had the same question. As part of the design, because this would basically take out the bus stop and the RRFB and replace it with a full signalized, can we have in, during the design phase of whatever we do, an overlay that looks at what the alignment of that intersection should be? And obviously, we'd have to have some pretty detailed discussions with the Sandagito Academy, because the, right now, they've got two lanes in, no lanes out, right across from where the intersection. We certainly want to have, whatever future happens on the south side for the 51-unit development, we want the north side to be able to match that with minimal changes.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Mayor, as you see on the screen right now, this is a very preliminary look. What this is, this is an indication that we have been working with that private development. This is not a final design by any stretch of the imagination, but there are conditions upon that project where they are going to have to work with the city to ensure that the signal that they install does match up with the needs of this corridor.
And looking at that, do I see the bus stop moving to the east, to the west, sorry? Is that tentatively?
Exactly.
Okay. Great. My next question is, where's the My next question is, where's the bus stop going? So I'll move on. And just to reiterate what you said, I think you said it very clearly, but I want to make sure everybody understands. I saw something in the paper about, this is going to cost $3 million. Yeah, but that $3 million, we saved back $1.6. And so, we're really only talking about incremental costs here of somewhere between, what was it, 1.4 and 1.9, right? Okay.
That's correct.
And that includes any design effort, too?
Exactly. All soft costs, which would be design costs as well as construction, management, and inspection costs.
Okay, great. And then, on the financing slide that you showed, where the money's coming from, I'm just wanted to verify where the 1.8 in general funds, is that something that is already in an account for this kind of, this project in particular, or?
Yes. So, these $4 million are in the project fund currently.
And, and does that include money that is earmarked for the east segment?
That's correct. So, the entire corridor, both the east and the western phase have a single project fund. So that would be, east and west would be included in this.
Okay, so, if we look at the various options here, from 2.8 at the low to 3.6 at the high, that does not include any estimate today for the east and we'd probably have to add more money in order to do the proposed, future proposed east, but we'd leave, hopefully, $400,000 there, okay?
That's correct.
Yeah. And that, those, that's my preliminary questions. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Thank you. There's some things that I know that I want to get staff to respond to, to confirm whether I'm correct or not. Sorry if this sounds like a little bit of an acquisition here, but it's my understanding that San De Gato Academy saw these plans for the first time when the public saw them, when this agenda was posted. Was there any coordination with them prior to that on these three options?
So, these three particular options, they were of the direction from City Council back in May. So, we have been analyzing the three options to bring back to council today. We have not gotten specific input from the school district on the three options. However, we have been working with the school district, really since the inception of this project. We've been working with them over the last few months as well. So, it is something where we have had coordination. We do know that at the entrance to the school, their parking lot, we are in the works of having some modifications done to our speed table, that pedestrian crossing. So, we are in communication, but we have not had any of the concepts floated by them yet.
Just want to make a point that they're the primary stakeholder being adjacent to the property and it's important for that, for them to weigh in on what these three options are. So, we will perhaps get some of that tonight, but it's not been vetted prior to this coming to us.
I met with them.
You have more?
Yes, I do. Also, I am aware that we didn't do our signal timing on, after the construction project was complete, the signal timing for that corridor, for that section, the lights, the was, so the actuators for the bikes was only done about a month ago. I know I'm not saying that correctly, Dan. Could you shed some light on that?
Yeah, sure. And I think Deputy Mayor, you may be speaking about the loop detectors for signals. And you're absolutely right. Those, during construction, and this is a normal part of construction, when you're doing work within a roadway, the loop detectors do get, we call it get cut, because you have to remove them to do any paving. Unfortunately, with the removal of any of the intersection improvements, we did not reestablish those loop detectors as quickly as we should have, quite honestly. And we have ensured that they have been reestablished now. They were reestablished and connected probably about a month and a half or two months ago. And, you know, we have ensured that the signal timing of this corridor has been as optimized as possible.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I think there was a little bit of concern when it was first opened, that it wasn't operating smoothly. And I think that a lot of the blame was put on other things, but it was an evolution of us getting it all properly up and running. And I do want to point out, too, that this is quite unusual, that we stopped the construction before it was complete. So there's a lot of things that still aren't complete. So that was more of a statement, this is an incomplete project.
And if we could stick to clarification questions.
And also, my final question is, and I know the answer, but I'd just like you to say it, Dan, are we coordinating with Caltrans on signal timing as well so that the whole corridor, our objective is for the whole corridor to flow more smoothly?
Right, yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. That is correct. We've been in coordination with Caltrans and it's not just this particular intersection, meaning Santa Fe and I-5. This is really a problem throughout the city of Encinitas with all of our intersections with the five. So we have a larger effort that our traffic team has been implementing, attempting to get better signal coordination with the Caltrans-owned signals. We have also coordinated with them on this particular location. They have not yet taken further action, which unfortunately is, we're hoping that that comes sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember O'Hara.
I just had a question and it actually piggybacks off of the mayor's question regarding the bus stop. I know that when the intersection goes in, or the intersection is added with the development, we're going to move that bus stop to the east side of the intersection. Why don't we do that now instead of moving it west and then moving it back east? So in this picture, I see us take it from the current location where the driveway will be for the development. I see us moving it south per this diagram, or east, west per this diagram. The final spot needs to be up on the east. So I'm curious why we are not moving it and why we're not looking to move it there now? Just for clarification.
We can't move it now because if you look, right now, there are existing driveways on each side of where the bus stop is today. So we designed the corridor based off what the existing conditions are and where the driveways are. When the development at 8:45 comes in, those two side driveways get closed and the intersection becomes a four-way intersection and that's when the bus needs to move. But you can't move the bus while the other two existing driveways are there, because then you're blocking those.
Can we just move it further east than the second driveway?
We could.
Okay. So we can talk about that during the next round of questions?
Yeah. And, Councilmember O'Hara, part of the reason why it wasn't moved further east is the further east we move it, we would be impacting some of the, some of the current parking. So part of the strategy is to maximize parking. That is something that can be looked at. It can always be moved further east or west, but moving it could potentially come with some other impacts.
Okay. We can follow that up on the next round of questions, all right? Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, with that, I think we'll go to public speakers. How many do we have?
We have, right now, 41 speakers.
Forty-one, wow. Okay. I'm going to ask, what's the pleasure of council? Forty-one would be, and some have, yeah, I see one indication, two minutes or three minutes? I would love to stay at three, but that's going to be over two hours because that is, there's probably, how many people with donations? So not all those are, are without donation.
I think there's a lot of people here who want to speak and I'd like to give them the three minutes.
Okay. Do we, do we have the time? Can we do that plus deliberation? I'm looking for buy-in.
So, if they do time donations, it'd be, it'd be the time donation of two minutes per.
Yeah.
Right, so it'd go from three minutes.
You get three minutes, you get two, if it's two minutes, you get two plus two for every time donation, because this is a special meeting, not a, it's not oral comments, so we do allow up to two donations.
I would propose the two minutes more for the fact this is now the third time that we've talked about this and this is a special meeting just around this.
Can I split the difference and call it two and a half?
Sure.
Okay, is that okay? And that way, just talk faster. So, we'll go two and a half per slot. You can do that, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, we can. We'll work that out.
Yeah, okay. So, and, boy, we don't even have room. So if you can come up to the sides so that we're not waiting for people coming from the back, if you're up next or the third, move towards the front beforehand so we're not spending a lot of time in between. But we do want to hear from you. Obviously, you have to sit through the same time we do, so we want to make sure we give you enough time, but, and if you need less than two and a half minutes, by all means, you know, please, please expedite to the degree you can.
And just to clarify that, they can have time donations in addition to the two and a half?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Standard, standard meeting rules, the only thing we're doing, shortening the time, so we have some time to deliberate towards the end.
All right. First three speakers, Lees McCarty, followed by Scott Schreckengaust, and then Natalie Satun with one-time donation from Kristi Dean.
Good evening, Councilman, Deputy Mayor.
If you can pull the microphone over.
Can you hear me better?
Much better.
Because my time's not starting until the presentation comes up, right?
Yeah, we'll get it up.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again for time to speak. I am going to request that you reject these options, being other, with the exception of the intersection improvements and the things that are mandatory across all three that have been recommended to have to go forward no matter what. But to change the existing, just to give you a little background, I have children at SDA. I've been driving there since 2019 and I can tell you that the existing road improvements really have improved things. The flow-through, getting in and out of the campus. Next slide, please. I believe I saw, Mayor Ehlers, that you had been quoted on the paper as saying, I'm not sure who's using it, so I wanted to address that. I have an upperclassman, so I'm dropping off in later, after first period, so I'm going there a little bit later in the morning. The top row is full at the first drop-off at eight, and this is at the, I guess, the east side. Below is at the south side. One of the things that I've asked people who are very upset or very concerned about the backend parking, my one question to them is, well, how is that easier than parallel parking? And to every single one of them, they all say, well, I don't parallel park either. So the people who are upset about the backend parking are also not parallel parking. So we may not be fixing a problem by switching this out. Furthermore, who is using these parking spots? Because they're full. When I go in, I'm in that parking lot and exiting. I can see that it's students. I can see students pulling and executing very cleanly, so I know for a fact. And how do I know they're students? Well, one, they're very young, so it's pretty obvious, but two, picking up their backpacks and crossing the street to go into campus. So I'm, and this is multiple, it's not a single. I have neighbors who, because of their, they have a super cute car, I see parks every morning there. So there are students who are using this as designed. Furthermore, I know there's a lot of worry about the landscaping and that sort of confused me because the rocks were, is it where the kids got out of their car? Because 14 to 18-year-olds and a little bit of rocks. But I think I've come to understand it was the boulders on the bike path. But as, as mentioned, that's been resolved. That's been, so the landscaping issues of the rocks, so that they open now into a nice flat area where they're getting out of their car on the passenger side versus those boulders being pulled away, which is the right thing to do from the bike paths. So many of these issues have been resolved with landscaping and some fine-tuning. Please continue. Okay, real, really quick, so the bike lanes?
No, I gotta cut, cut you off. You gotta be fair to everybody, both sides.
Fair enough, thank you.
Hi, everyone, thanks. First and foremost, thanks for the stop sign at Crest in Santa Fe. It's helped tremendously. I'm concerned about having more parking and looking at the SDA side, if there's a possibility to put more parking there, because there's a lot of space. That's one of the things I'd like to propose as an option. I'm also a bike rider and I go westbound a lot and that kind of chicane curving area isn't very clear. And people pulling into Santa Fe, they don't expect a bike pretty far in. Additionally, when you're headed eastbound, the separated bike lane away is a little bit awkward for driveways to come in. So when you're pulling into driveways, you don't expect a bike lane pretty far in. Those are my two concerns. I'm mostly wanting the whole flow between the west and the east to be continuous and making it look nice. So thanks for your time. I'll donate the rest to the person who needs it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Natalie Satun-Cartiff. So here are a snippet, here are a snippet of injuries. Since the project has fully opened this spring, a pedestrian struck on April 12th, trauma center in La Jolla. A cyclist on September 5th was struck in the bike lane. And a cyclist on October 9th, and he was also sent to the trauma center in La Jolla. Three trauma center calls since April. How many millions of dollars do you think this is? And why has not any, why have we not had an advocacy group lobby for these people? Why, why is nobody lobbying for these people who have been struck since April? Aside from my comment posted earlier today noting specific design hazards, I urge the council to keep in mind underlying but related points for reconsideration bringing us here. Per the traffic engineer Abe Bandigan himself, the current design was intended to reduce vehicular traffic on this essential street. Ultimately, this plan redirects traffic into neighboring streets, making all surrounding area streets unsafe and burdens deputies with parking enforcement either deliberately or unintentionally non-compliant. Objections to any project redesigner based on the two fatalities on Santa Fe, both the tragic result of errors and judgment of teenagers, one on an e-bike and the other behind the wheel. While heartbreaking, these incidents remind us that risk is inherent in mobility with a broad array of unforeseen contributing factors and the city cannot control every factor contributing to roadway risk, including drunk driving, distracted driving, medical emergencies behind the wheel, or road rage. This road has had 14 DUI arrests in 2024 alone. We've seen a resistance to safe and sensible redesign devolve into something politicized. We see advocacy driven by PACs and campaign cycles with coordinated performative calls to action and color-themed shirts that distract from the core issue, community safety. The timing of this redesign proposal coinciding with the senator's reelection campaign underscores the need for logic from genuine local voices. Local control should extend beyond development to include mobility and transportation design. Sandag's funding criteria often impose parameters that do not suit our city's character or needs. The general plan should support council rejecting the use of grant funds for projects that fail to reflect local conditions or priorities like Santa Fe. We currently have a traffic engineer who designs roads and leaves us with bobbing and weaving. He designs and makes recommendations that may check regional boxes but do not reflect practical, safe, or community-oriented mobility planning. I urge the council to prioritize realistic, data-driven, and locally appropriate solutions focused not on political optics but on shared, on the shared goal of ensuring every resident can travel safely traverse Santa Fe. Please adopt option B. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Laura Van Dusen, followed by Erin Hebshi, and Judy Berlefin with a time donation from Dada Ponzo.
Good evening, Mayor Ehlers and council members. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Safe Streets Encinitas. Once again, thank you for your willingness to build relationships with Safe Streets Encinitas. The open dialogue that we've had with each of you is greatly appreciated. We understand there are issues with Santa Fe that need to be fixed. We support road improvements to make Santa Fe safer for everybody. However, we do not have confidence that these options are the best designs that our city could implement. We urge you to first move forward with work on Santa Fe East as this corridor is currently very unsafe and needs immediate attention. Safe Streets Encinitas is here to partner with this process. Safe Streets Encinitas is here to partner with this process. We want to work together towards solutions that are safer and smarter for our entire community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Erin Hebshi. I'm Lucadia District 1 and also a part of Encinitas Bike Walk. This is, you can see on the screen, some speed reduction data from the corridor. So you'll see that prior to construction in 2023, the city collected speed data, eastbound and westbound, 37 miles per hour and 41 miles per hour respectively. After construction, that dropped to 29 and 37 respectively. So eight miles per hour drop on west, on eastbound, and four mile per hour drop westbound. Especially eastbound, that's significant. Like that, that's some serious speed reduction, and we know that speed reduction means increase in safety. So what led to the, that speed reduction? It was mostly likely the narrowing of the lanes to 10 feet. What I see in all three options that are proposed tonight is to enlarge, expand those lanes back to 11 and 11 and a half feet. We will actually be undoing the, the slow-speed benefit that we gained from this project. So at the same time, spending 1.3 to 1.9 million dollars to do that, that just doesn't make any sense. I would much rather see, if we're, if we're going to spend money allegedly on safety, to actually do things that will increase safety, such as funding the east portion of the corridor. Or how about this? This is from our Infrastructure Task Force report. We have $1.3 billion of projects that the Infrastructure Task Force assembled that are either deferred maintenance or new projects that'll make our community better. The $1.6 million to finish the actual project, the components that we need to do, that's great, let's do that. But the additional 1.3 to 1.9 to actually decrease safety just doesn't make any sense. Let's see, how much time do we have left? I've got more, but that's it for tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Following Judy is Bernie Dillon, Marley Jowdy, and then Casey Gupta.
Hello, Mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. Thank you all for taking the time to talk with me about this project. I appreciate our conversations. I hope you will keep in mind John Eldon's comments when you deliberate tonight. This is what he said. "I agree with your other proposed changes, but please," all in caps, "do not widen travel lanes. We can have wider bike lanes and wider painted buffers between bike lanes and main travel lanes, and possibly wider pedestrian spaces or a wider center divider. The narrowing of the main travel lanes, which have repeatedly been demonstrated to reduce traffic speeds," and then in parentheses, "remember, 'speed kills' is not just a slogan, was the one good idea the previous leadership had." Signed by John Eldon. "I say in response, perhaps we can shave off one foot of the planters so larger cars can have more leeway. But I, John and I don't usually agree, but here, I agree with John. Don't paint the lanes wider." So on the big picture, I get it. Driving is kind of a nightmare in this town. We've got lots of cars, some passing through from north to work in the south, some who live here, and some from coming outside to work here. There are kids obeying the laws on e-bikes and kids laughing at the laws. You never know which kind of kid is going to pass you. There are adults in spandex stopping at red lights, and there are adults in spandex running red lights. And of course, there are also drivers running red lights and laughing at laws. Every turn you take brings something unexpected. I get it, and I don't blame you for feeling frustrated, like you want to make the driving experience better. I want to make sure you're, we're using an effective strategy to accomplish this. So here are my first and second choices for the options being presented tonight. My first choice is to wait and observe more, and make sure we're crystal clear on what problems we're trying to solve. Why? We have a new principal at SDA. We haven't done any bike education. As people have mentioned, we have a new development going in. Let's coordinate with the developer and the principal. Jim, your comments about the bus stop are perfect. It's an example of unexpected events that can happen. If we redo this now and then we have to rip it out again when the development goes in, these poor people who live on Santa Fe, I feel for them. So let's move forward, building sidewalks and installing bike lanes on Santa Fe East now, before someone gets hurt there, and put this on hold. That's my first choice. My second choice is option A. This preserves the separated bike lanes on both sides of the road, so cyclists are not side-by-side with fast-moving vehicles. Why do I say this? One of our residents died on Encinitas Boulevard this year because the driver crossed over the painted white line while the gentleman was cycling home. I don't know what exactly. The physical separation can protect cyclists from being hit by texting or distracted drivers. In addition, before this project went in, parents queued up in the bike lane and delivery vehicles double parked there. If we make the bike lanes unprotected, that will happen again. So the project set out to achieve three goals, and in my perspective, it's achieved them. It slowed speeds, as Erin just showed you, they've gone eight miles per hour slower in one direction and four miles per hour in the other. That's the city's data. And as John says, speed kills. It separated bikes from vehicles, and it's provided safe walking paths. So before we change anything, can we clarify the goals and associated risks and benefits of our choices? I'd love to see a chart outlining all of these, so we can all be on the same page in this discussion. Mayor, we need your engineering mind in this discussion, and we also need the lived experience of our council members, as well as that of residents who drive, walk, and bike here. Together, we should be able to come up with a solution that works for many. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ehlers and city council. I have to disagree with a lot of the facts that have been presented, because as an Uber driver that delivers to houses all throughout Encinitas, Carlsbad, Solana Beach, and the rest, I can personally tell you that people are not slowing down on Santa Fe Drive. I have sat at that corner and watched people go 55 miles an hour to get through that red light. I've seen the mileage on the thing that tells you how fast people are going. People are racing to get through the east side. People run through the stop signs. People do not stop for the kids that are trying to cross. The rocks that are still in those planter boxes, kids are getting hurt. I watched two girls hit the Ballard because, from McKinnon, where the bike path hits Santa Fe Drive on the other side, the bike path goes straight into the planter box. It doesn't go to the bike path. There are other places where there's a tiny little lip, which a council member pointed out was very, very dangerous. And sure enough, bicyclists hit it and spent how many weeks in the hospital? What is that lawsuit going to cost the city? What is that going to cost the taxpayers? When they first built this, I didn't realize that we were going to have to pay for landscaping every month. There are still giant boulders in there. People have to cross a huge curb to get across the rocks to walk through the bike path to get to church. The one and only disability parking is at the western end of the backup parking, which means a person that's disabled now has to cross and go up the hill to get either to the churches, the businesses, because that's the one and only parking. And there's supposed to be one for every six open parking spots. We have how many? We're not compliant. Those rocks are so deadly to try and stand on, and if you're on crutches or a cane, you can't get across them. The problems have not been fixed. The speeding is still super excessive. People are blowing through those red lights, they're blowing through the stop signs, they're blowing through where pedestrians cross, and that has to stop. We need cameras up all four corners of SDA and start nailing people with tickets. Hook the sheriff up and make the disaster stop. Thank you.
Marley, followed by Casey Gupta.
Hi, thank you so much for your time today. I am a former SDA student, and I'm in favor of keeping Santa Fe the current configuration the way it is and improving it. The 10-foot lanes are ideal, and the City of San Diego Draft Street Design Manual indicates that they have a preference for 10-foot lanes that, because they are safer. A national investigation on the impacts of traffic lane width on traffic safety says that nine- or 10-foot lanes were associated with significantly fewer non-intersection crashes. And between Nardo and McKinnon, out of all the options, option A is the most ideal, as it's vital to keep the separated bike lanes. All traffic safeties show that protected bike lanes are safer. In addition, head-and-angle parking requires people to back up into traffic or to go into their trunks next to traffic, which is not ideal. In addition to this, there are plenty of other projects, as Erin showed, that I would love to be prioritized. This includes the Coastal Rail Trail from Encinitas to Acosta for 16 million, a project that would lead to future connectivity and safety, the Nardo sidewalk infill for 800K, and Safer to School sidewalk program for 200K. I'm once again asking you to improve, not remove. Thank you so much.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hi, my, hi, my name's Casey, I'm 17, and I go to the Grower School. I'm here because Santa Fe Drive West, the project, represents the kind of street we should be building everywhere, one which values human life over convenience. It's how students from all over the city get to San DeGuito Academy safely, and it's one of the only places in North County where biking and walking to school actually feels safe. But tonight, the city is being asked to consider options that would undo that progress, and the truth is, none of these options work. None of them keep the 10-foot lanes that slow cars down, none of them protect people biking, none of them preserve the complete street's design that already saved lives. What's even the point of proposing new bike lanes on Santa Fe East that offer no real protection? We know from the Federal Highway Administration and NACTO that lane widths is the strongest predictor of speed, and speed determines whether a person lives or dies in a crash. A pedestrian struck at 20 miles an hour has a 10% chance of dying. At 40 miles an hour, that jumps to 80%. Widening lanes on Santa Fe Drive isn't just a design decision, it's a decision about whether a kid makes it home alive. I've seen too many memorials on roads like this, we all have. Don't let Santa Fe Drive become another one of those stories. Encinitas can lead by finishing what it started, by protecting kids, not parking spaces, by prioritizing life over speed. Please reject every option that removes safety features or widens lanes. Finish the project, keep the 10-foot lanes, improve, don't remove. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Kathy Santone, followed by Sandra Edwards, and then Hazel Hebshi.
Hello, my name is Kat, Dr. Kathy Santone. Our dental practice, Encinitas Cosmetic Dentistry, has been providing dental health care for the residents of Encinitas and the surrounding communities for the past 30 years in the professional building located on the corner of Windsor and Santa Fe. My father, Dr. Jack Santone, a dentist, has practiced in our building since 1984. My sister and brother-in-law, Doctors Deborah and Michael Haug, are optometrists, providing eye health care in the, in our building since 1996. I'm located directly across from San DeGuito Academy and have a front row view of SDA's e-bike parking area. The loss of the five front-end dedicated parking spaces on Santa Fe took away a safe parking and access to dental and eye health care for our patients. The poor city design removed 50% of our building's dedicated off-street patient parking using a land easement designated specifically for road and traffic improvement. This is the view from my office. Since the back-end parking opened, we have effectively no patient parking in front of our building from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. When I arrive at work, an average of eight out of the 10 available closest spaces are already occupied by 7:30, and they're construction workers, they're not school students in front of my office. Our practice serves 2,500 patients and their families. Our dental team of seven see and hear from an average of 24 patients a day. Our patients report how narrow and confusing the current back-end parking is, how difficult it is to step over an extra-high curve into a bike lane where they may encounter an e-biker traveling at 25 miles an hour just to get to their appointment. Since the street renovations, my previous parking is a glorified planter box, and has been, and has made Santa Fe Drive more dangerous to navigate for cars, cyclists, and pedestrians. The current condition of this quarter-mile of Santa Fe Drive with separated bike lanes is not a public road improvement. It has created dangerous, controversial, and contentious situation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandy Edwards, and we live right near the intersection of Windsor and Santa Fe. We've been there since the 70s, and we've seen, this has been a big improvement. The traffic has slowed down a lot, and I've, we've raised our children here, and we know how dangerous Santa Fe used to be. I used to worry when my kids would go to Santa, to San DeGuito or to the junior high school, because going across Santa Fe was so dangerous. So now it's definitely slowed down the traffic. There's plenty of parking, it's more orderly in the morning for the kids, and I walk around there, it's prettier. It's definitely upgraded the area, and it just feels so much safer. For years, we would hear accidents all the time. On the weekends, we knew we would hear an accident, and some of them were really bad, and we would say, when are they going to fix this? So this has been such an improvement. Please don't change it, just keep it as it is, and continue to El Camino Real. It's much safer for the kids. And it's just, it's really a beautiful improvement. For years, it was dangerous, and that's all I have to say. It's just, please, don't get rid of it. I mean, it's been such a positive thing. And we've lived here, so we know for sure that it's improved, so that's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Hazel, and the reason I think that we shouldn't remove it is because it, like, protects, like, people's lives from being hit by, like, cars that could be texting, like, people could be biking there, and then a car just, like, comes in and drives, like, over them. Even if that didn't happen, the fact that it could happen is just really scary, because there could be people that are biking there. And that could, like, I don't know, just, like, would be really scary to take that away because... away because it's already been improved, and it's perfectly fine the way that it is. And like, my mom, she was biking, and it was on the 101 where they're doing construction, so there's like no buffers, no anything. And she got closed in by a car, and it was really scary for me because I didn't want anything to happen to her. And the fact that that could happen there, and that's happened to her many times, the fact that that could happen to anyone there is just scary that people could die. And it's just really scary. Thank you.
Next three speakers. Jim Wong, followed by Molly Hentleyan with a time donation from Pete Albanese, and then Rigma Visconti.
Gosh, I don't know how I'm going to follow that. It's hard and hard to follow that. So same thing happened last time I spoke to you. So my name's Jim Wong. I'm Cardiff on Windsor, a few doors down from SDA. And every day, I see many students walking and riding their bikes to school. Now, we all know that speed kills. I don't have to repeat that. But slowing down is kind of inconvenient for commuters because it's a change of habit. But convenience is not the prime priority here. It's the safety of our students. Now, I know these commuters, they may be coming from San Marcos Vista, and they're hurrying to get to freeway. So they look on Waze or Google Maps and see, and it tells you, "Hey, if you take Santa Fe, it's a little shorter, and you won't see the traffic at Manchester," so take Santa Fe. And so they do that. But Google Maps and Waze, they don't care about the safety of students, but we do, and we should, because they are far more important than the convenience of commuters. So don't spend money trying to make it more convenient for commuters. Don't make it a better shortcut. If you do that, then that will not only make it more dangerous, but attract more cars. It'll be even worse. We have plenty of other expenses for $1.5 million. We improve the safety rather than undoing the safety we do have right now. So put your priorities where it should be. Don't make it a commuter route. Santa Fe is a local road for local people, like students going to school. So please say no to A, B, or C. Spend the money on some other safety improvement. Thank you.
Good evening, Council Mayor Molly Hentleyan, District 2. Do I have the clicker? There we go. We all know the basics of Santa Fe Drive. Thank you, that was a great presentation of explaining what all those diagrams meant. I've shown this slide before, and we need to address two issues with Santa Fe. And it really is rooted in engineering deficiencies, the planter boxes, and the back-end angled parking. I think some people have talked about the 11-inch curb. It's a big step without handrails or other safety aids. It's unstable, and bikes do rise in. So to the back-end angle parking, I experienced road rage, and I did some when I was trying to back in. I've done some research on Google. And can you play the tutorial? It's just a quick one.
However, the further away you are from the parking space, the easier it will be to park. Okay, step one, find an available parking space. Step two, take the correct position on the road. We'll use the side mirrors for orientation. Move forward slowly until your right side mirror aligns with the parking space start line. Step three, be sure to turn on your right turn signal so that other drivers know what you will do next. Look in your side mirrors and make sure you are not in anyone's way or causing an accident. Turn the steering wheel all the way to the left and slowly start driving until you are parallel to the parking line in your side mirror. Step four, therefore, you can easily park in a fairly narrow part of E to park.
So the reason for showing that is that it's an engineering and design issue. You need to pull farther out into the middle lane to get the angle needed to park. The street is not wide enough. Adding to the challenge is opposing oncoming traffic in the median lane. And you also, as the diagram showed you, it's best to pull farther away from the parking spot to get the angle you need. I did some research on 60-degree angle parking. It requires a 12-foot minimum lane width. According to the San Diego City Parking Design Manual, for a single lane, it's 19 feet, and for a two-way lane, it's 12. Santa Fe is only 10 feet. San Diego has a city design manual, and I think we should have one, too. I couldn't find any information in all of our general plan or diagrams. No car got the angle right on a Sunday. And by the way, that's me in the blue car. So I'm guilty. So as this diagram showed us in that tutorial, and even this car shows, and it's not indicating what the lane width is or the aisle width, it's visually evident that street width is important. And as the video showed, going farther helps. So we know Santa Fe Drive is a busy road. It's the access to our hospital and the five freeway. It's not just a local road. So I do appreciate the parallel parking as a better solution with two options for bike lanes. I will defer to our staff to do better this time round on the bike lanes because they're very inconsistent. And as a summary, to expand upon another recommendation sent to council, we should hire a qualified mobility manager, one with an engineering degree and an expert in traffic design. I feel like we have a demand for this as the city grows. We also need to create a proper design manual for street modification. The city is expanding. We need to update our guidelines and our general plan. I'm just a little bit unclear how this project got as far as it did with as many flaws as it has. And we need to be better at project management. So no matter who we hire in any of these modifications, our city staff needs to monitor and oversee work as it's done and ensure compliance. Thank you.
Hello. Honorable mayor, deputy mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Rigma Visconti, and I serve as a trustee of the San de Gito Union High School District, representing the area that includes San de Gito Academy High School on Santa Fe Drive. Our district recently learned about the potential modification options being presented tonight. On October 29th, SDA interim principal, Robert Shockney, superintendent, Dr. Steffary, and I met with council member Jim O'Hara to discuss the matter for the first time. However, we did not have access to the specific proposals until they were made public with the release of this meeting's agenda. Our primary request is simple. Please maintain Santa Fe in its current design for now. SDA Academy, SDA experienced over a year of significant traffic disruptions during the original construction. The project has only recently been completed except for the intersections, and the community has had just a few months to adjust to the new traffic patterns, not long enough for us to offer you meaningful, data-based feedback. We believe it's important to allow more time for adjustment and to collect additional information before considering any major changes. We shared this perspective with council member O'Hara, who indicated that maintaining the status quo might not be an available option. If that is the case, our superintendent of business service, Steve Dickinson, is here tonight, and he will share the district's more detailed recommendations, with an emphasis on maintaining slower vehicle speeds and bicycle safety. So in closing, I want to emphasize that our foremost priority is to pause any further construction on Santa Fe Drive until we have gathered sufficient data, carefully reviewed all alternatives, and ensured that every smaller, less disruptive improvement has been fully explored before undertaking another major project. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Steve Dickinson, followed by Michelle Horsley, and then Patty Stottermeyer.
Good evening, Steve Dickinson, Assistant Superintendent of Business for the school district. Glad to follow trustee Visconti and echo some of her comments. Our primary request is to maintain the street as is for now, especially hearing the construction that will be coming with the housing project. Construction zones themselves are inherently dangerous, so we'd like to wait, and if there is substantial construction coming, do it all at the same time. If that's not an option, if you are planning to do construction now, then our recommendations are to continue to get slower speeds for both vehicles and bikes. I've heard you talk about the speed table. That is still a concern that comes into the main parking lot of the high school. Lots of comments about the large loose rocks. Those are still a concern for us. The timing of the lights. Glad to hear that you're talking about that. And finally, just appreciate your staff's communication with the district. So if construction is still in the future, please ask us for our input on construction schedules, start of school, end of school year, all the big events, graduation, those kinds of things. Always good to be in communication with the district and the school site. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Michelle Horsley, and I'm the president of the San de Gito Faculty Association. I represent over 600 educators and 10 schools in the district, including four that reside in the Encinitas boundaries, including SDA and Oak Crest, both very close, and Sunset, where I teach, close to what we're discussing tonight. SDFA encourages the Encinitas City Council to limit construction on Santa Fe Drive and preserve the existing improvements. Students and staff being able to safely bike and walk to school without the danger and disruption of construction should be part of this discussion. There are four schools within a few blocks of each other with over 2,500 students traveling to and from school every day. Hundreds of students and many educators use the bike lanes and the sidewalks to arrive at school safely. As a longtime resident of the SDA neighborhood on a street directly bordering the school, I know firsthand the impact that construction has on the streets surrounding Santa Fe, namely Bonita, Nardo, and Melba. They're clogged during the construction. We're clogged with parents picking up and dropping off, school buses, city buses, bicyclists, local people walking their dogs, and tons of construction vehicles, often parked, may I add, in areas they are not supposed to be parked, and on the narrow streets of Bonita and Nardo that are already crowded. I personally witnessed many near misses and a few fender benders. And I think if we allow chaos in construction to begin again, that we're just waiting for an accident to happen here. I think our students deserve to have safe and stress-free travel to and from school. And as educators, we make students our number-one priority, and I ask the city council to do the same. Thank you for your time.
First of all, thank you for asking staff to make some revisions. I think they're needed, and I really appreciate all the work that the staff has done and this very clear presentation. So make Encinitas save, yes, please, but not with this. QR codes require phones. Dangerous while driving. But is a good way to harvest contact info to propagate a political agenda? So what got my attention on the agenda report was page two, "Complete Streets." From Smart Growth America, "Complete Streets." Now, notice the picture here. It's kind of a tip-off. No cars. "Complete Street Transformations." What are they saying to manage speed? Narrowed driving lanes to reduce vehicle speed. I find that is indoctrination, and one person just already said how she's seeing a lot of speeding on the narrow lanes there. Okay, road diets. Take away car lanes. And then, no cars? Speed safety cameras. When has a camera ever saved a life? Somebody, the last council meeting, recommended to not spend money on guardrails. But cameras? Anyway, when a mother tells you that while in an ambulance with her baby that cannot proceed through traffic jam on Santa Fe Drive, only blocks away from the hospital due to cars not able to pull over to let an emergency vehicle get through, do you question the overall safety of these kinds of traffic barriers, protrusions in the street? You know, on the public comment, I voted for C, the head-and parking. And also, it separates the parking from, or the driving from the bicycles, which I thought was good. I don't know really if it will take care of, you know, emergency vehicles to get through, but this is a very important thing. Also, thank you.
Next three speakers are Scott Campbell, followed by Lisa Lester, and then Chris Gospoel.
My name is Scott Campbell. I live in Encinitas, District 1. I've driven on this road, and I don't enjoy driving in the curbs, in the gutter. So I will go over that white line because that's safe for me. That's a personal safety decision. Anyways, this is about safety and quality, and I hope that the council prefers data over emotions. And I've heard some really good comments tonight. Safety is basically risk mitigation, and risk mitigation is something that's quantifiable. Safety isn't really quantifiable. You can say, "I want it safe." We need to count the numbers before and after. I've heard some of those tonight. What was the original use case? This goes back to 2015, and it was safety and mobility for all modes. Just remember this. What existing problems were being addressed back then? When you do new designs and you change an existing something, you are introducing new risks. Does the city have a process to evaluate these new risks? This was addressed earlier in public comments also. How can this process be fixed so this doesn't happen again? This went through initial plans from 2015, and 2020, and 2022, Planning Commission, Mobility Commission. Here we are, the third or fourth time here with the council. The process failed us. It's not a fault of any one person or any group. The process failed, and I encourage the council to dig into it so that we can not waste time with all this again. The customer complaints and reports are coming in. The post-release review shows expectations are not being met. We've heard a lot of people saying they want to keep it. I've actually been keeping score. I've got eight people, three that said they were not sure, and one said A, one said B, and some of those are duplicated. It's not so much the severity of an incident, it's the number of occurrences. I've heard a lot about speed kills. Well, if we go a little bit slower, but you have more accidents, you have the same amount of safety failures. People are saying about the 10-foot lanes. I believe the 10-foot lanes are also on the Acadia Boulevard, the restriping. People are going 50 miles an hour. So there's more to it than just the lane widths. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Lester, Encinitas. I first want to thank really quickly everybody else who got up and spoke, no matter your opinion, I really appreciate what everyone had to say. So, when the city completed the roadwork on Santa Fe, I was actually shocked. We went from a simple road to a hazardous ice sore that lacks function. I resigned myself after hearing members of the previous city council members talk about the project, that there was nothing I could do. However, that changed when my husband made use of the most confusing uneven bike lane, resulting in significant injuries. Now, I am, over two months later, still dealing with the consequences of his injuries, and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. I appreciate that the current city council recognizes that this work on Santa Fe is not all an improvement, nor is it all functional. I hope that no matter which option you consider, please make improving the quality of the bike lanes on Santa Fe a priority. Thank you.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm Pastor Chris Gospel from Venture Church. We are located directly across the street from SDA. Just a background with us, we have basically 125 spots, parking spots inside of our lot, and four services that we empty out and we fill the lot during those services continuously, four times during Sundays, and then once again on Thursdays. Additionally, about 150 kids cross from SDA over to us for pizza parties, et cetera, throughout the week. So, we are constantly involved in this segment of road and engaging with the community in this area. As a cyclist myself, who nearly lost his life in a cyclist versus vehicle accident, I applaud you guys trying to solve this problem. I thank you guys for your efforts. But right now, these efforts are just falling a little bit short with basically the south side of the road. And specifically, what we're looking at is two elements. First is the entrance into the basically Venture parking lot. The road, with it being as narrow as it is, we're looking at a 10-foot center road and nine feet on the sides. When my congregants are turning in from going eastbound into the parking lot, they basically have to stop in that center lane, and other vehicle traffic cannot get by. So, I'm ending up having to back up traffic either way as my congregants are entering into that area. That's the one element there. The second element is on our exit. This is the one part that I'm most, I guess, passionate about, if you will. Specifically, as my congregants are leaving the exit, they have to navigate a bike lane, followed by vehicles blocking their view, followed by entering the road. And as we've talked about before, speeds can vary from 20 miles per hour all the way up to 40 to 50 miles per hour on that. So, my congregants often are greeted with honking horns or different fingers being given to them as they drive by, unfortunately. So, with that, we are requesting option B specifically on that. We have reached out to the Sheriff's Department to see if we can get assistance with the exit of our vehicle, our parking lot, and they have not been able to sort of apply us with a deputy to be able to assist with that exit. So, we now are taking that on ourselves, actually hire a company to actually safely enter the, or exit onto Santa Fe Drive. Additionally, as we spoke, there's another 51 homes that are being near this area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next three speakers, Travis Newhouse, followed by Karen Yasi Meyer, and then Steve Linky with a time donation from Karen Kayden and Dave Hutchinson, who are present.
Mayor Ellers, City Council, thank you for your service. I witnessed in these chambers years ago that Lucadia Streetscape and Cardiff Rail Trail both faced fierce resistance. Yet today, they're celebrated successes. Hundreds enjoy the rail trail every day. The completed segment of Lucadia Streetscape is the most beautiful section off Coast Highway Business District. Those projects took visionary leadership. Change requires leaders willing to guide the community toward a better future despite initial opposition. As a resident on Arcadia Drive, one block from Santa Fe Drive, I participated in the community focus groups in 2020 and supported the design. Since April, I've seen exactly what I had hoped for, students biking and walking to school safely, including my own kids. The data is clear. There is increased safety with lower vehicle speeds. Comparing observed vehicle speeds on Santa Fe Drive before and after construction, the 85th percentile speeds have reduced from four to eight miles per hour. For a neighborhood street adjacent to two high schools, one middle school, and two elementary schools and homes, safety must be the top priority. I reviewed the written public comments. Three to one favor no change in the design. Undoing six-month-old work is fiscally irresponsible when there are no safety concerns and the public favors no change. The costs and construction disruption would waste taxpayer dollars. I ask you, don't rush into modifications. Look at objective safety data, not subjective opinions. Spend available funds on the original design, completing the intersection improvements and Santa Fe East. Give this project time to succeed. Trust the community process. Be the leaders who guide us through this change toward a better future. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Karen Yasi Meyer. I've been a resident of North County for over 45 years. I live right on Arcadia Road and come out on Santa Fe there. It's an absolute mess. The Uber driver that was talking about people speeding and running lights, they do, they want to raise the light to get to the freeway or whatever else they're doing. The congestion, there's no doubt, we have to live with what we got. However, the back-end driving is, parking is a total disaster. Somebody was saying how they go over the line, and they have to come all the way around to accommodate somebody trying to park. The speeding, the accidents. I don't come out Santa Fe hardly anymore. I go around the Academy, or I come around 7-Eleven. It is just too dangerous. That, I'm sure this all looked good on paper, as the old saying goes, but the consideration of the traffic, the population of our community is growing and growing to, it's outgrowing our community. It is a disaster. I've seen so many accidents, I can't even tell you how many. I myself, I've been very fortunate that I've avoided that area and accidents. The kids, it's really frightening to see them on their e-bikes and see them walking near misses all the time. The parking, the speeding, and it's too busy. People are too distracted right now to really pay attention to all the signage or the guards, those reflector things or whatever they're called. And it is a major accident going to happen real soon. I don't walk anymore like I used to, go down to Swamis and back, and it's just too hazardous to do that even for an adult. So, whatever consideration is, the back-end parking is a really big problem. All right? Thank you very much for your time.
Following Steve is going to be Ron Meddak, Adam Connor, and then Grace Fear.
Good evening, Council, Steve Linky. I'm going to cover three general issues with the current design, including the narrow vehicle lanes, hazardous separated bikeways, and the planters. And I will support a recommendation to start with staff's option B and propose some additional changes. First, the vehicle lane widths. Although officially listed at 10 feet, several residents have measured some areas as little as nine feet two inches. Santa Fe serves many NCTD and school buses, which are up to 10 and 1/2 feet wide with their mirrors, and national guidance suggests 11 feet for bus routes. Diversion of vehicles to Melba Road may be an unintended consequence of this. This morning, I spoke to a crossing guard named Sally who works the crosswalk near the SDA entrance. Her main concern, she expressed to me, was that the vehicle lanes and bus stops are too narrow. Many vehicles are driving over the lines. I witnessed this, too. A large proportion of vehicles are not driving in the lanes because they're too narrow. She said that any small incident leads to more significant problems. She provided an example of a bus that was hit by a pickup truck in the bus stop several days ago. All westbound vehicles then had to use the center turn lane for several hours. Drivers tend to make poor safety decisions when there's congestion. I'm suggesting that probably 10 and 1/2 feet for the drivelines would be sufficient, though. Next is the dangerous separated bikeways. Here, I will focus on the intersection and driveway density and the fact that the bikeways, particularly the westbound one, are convoluted and filled with both surface and vertical crash hazards on Santa Fe. Motorists and cyclists tend to be less aware of each other when there are separation to the bike lane. In this example, the yellow arrow represents a vehicle turning right off eastbound Santa Fe, and the red arrow represents a cyclist in the eastbound separated bikeway, who is largely hidden from the view and awareness of the turning vehicle due to distance and a row of parked vehicles, putting them at elevated risk of right-hook crashes. A fatality occurred in the separated bikeway on Lucadia Boulevard in 2020 when a right-turning truck collided with a cyclist. A lawsuit suggested the separated bikeway infrastructure as the primary cause of this right-hook crash, and some of it was subsequently removed. This is one of many examples in North County, San Diego, and across the country. In this less than 1/2-mile-long project area, I counted 14 intersections and driveways on the north side and 19 on the south side that are subject to higher risks, a density that I would argue is too high for separated bikeways. Now, let's take a quick virtual trip along the current westbound bikeway. I'm going to show a series of pictures going east to west. Number one is the confusing narrow entrance to the bikeway with concrete curbs and random bollards as crash hazards. Number two is a quick jog to the right plus a pavement change immediately after the entrance. Number three shows yellow non-flexible crash bollards directly adjacent to the bikeway. And number four shows wood mulch on the bikeway, which is an example of potentially crash-causing debris that exists throughout the bikeway due to cleaning challenges. These next areas are probably the most dangerous. I'll focus probably most of my time on this. Number five shows another pavement change and a sudden jog to the right, putting the bikeway directly adjacent to the sidewalk on the right. This is just prior to the SDA entrance, with vehicles entering to the right from both westbound and eastbound Santa Fe. This morning, at drop-off time, I counted five e-bicyclists using the bikeway, which I was surprised was very low. I thought there'd be a lot more, but only five. Two of them turned right onto the entrance road. Another two, though, went straight across without slowing down. This is downhill, and I would estimate they were approaching 25 miles per hour and not able to monitor whether vehicles turning into the driveway might cross their path. This is also just inches away from the pedestrian sidewalk. Please consider some sort of bike speed limit and/or yield or stop signs at this crossing if possible. The fifth cyclist stopped and activated the RRFB, but there was confusion, and a right-turning car had to stop abruptly because the driver didn't see the RRFB or the cyclist starting to cross. Number six is just past the SDA entrance with an awkward curve around the bus stop area. At the yellow arrow, there is a sudden offset to the right, and the bikeway becomes quite narrow. About two months ago, at the red arrow, a cyclist hit the edge of this sidewalk, was ejected from his bike, and suffered upper body injuries that required transport to the Scripps Memorial Trauma Unit and a five-day hospital stay. The fresh asphalt you see here on the next slide, here and on the next slide, was in the apparent fix. And I think his wife was the one that spoke earlier. Number seven shows the sudden narrowing at the bus stop. Again, number eight shows the bikeway curving back left after the bus stop with more fresh asphalt at the sidewalk edge. Number nine shows pavement changes and ramps again on both sides of the SDA exit with more random plastic bollards serving as crash hazards. Numbers 10 and 11 show yet another pavement change and ramp down to a narrow path between two curbs. Number 12 is another messy area with the bikeway partially painted on a utility cover with inconsistent pavement and gaps that could catch narrow wheels. Numbers 13 and 14 show more rapid jogs to the left and back to the right just prior to the Nardo intersection. And finally, numbers 15 and 16 show two examples of bollards installed right up to driveways in the residential area west of Nardo, increasing right-hook risk. Ideal bikeway characteristics are that they're straight, or at least predictable, wide, smooth, kept clean, and free of vertical crash hazards. While well-intentioned, the westbound bikeway on Santa Fe fails to meet any of these characteristics. In addition to the fatality on Lucadia Boulevard and the severe injury and hospitalization on Santa Fe, there have been numerous other documented incidents in North County, including two fatalities and numerous visible and severe injuries arising from collisions with separated bikeway infrastructure. Option B, therefore, is superior because it at least changes the south side to an on-street bike lane in the eastbound direction. However, a lack of space means that the westbound direction is challenging the change. One thing that uses a lot of space throughout is the planters, which also require a passenger-side egress buffer so they can take five or more feet away from roadway width. The more linear planters, like the one on the left, take up space for the full length, while the bump-out type on the right replace a bit of parking but allow more width elsewhere. So, a few questions for engineering staff are whether the planters can be replaced with systems that do not use street space, whether they can be narrowed and moved adjacent to sidewalks, and what configurations are required. Another possible way to gain more space would be to widen the street on the north side. There appears to be about an additional 15 feet before reaching most of the major utility boxes. However, feasibility and cost are unknown. And I'm running out of time here because this was supposed to be nine minutes, but this is an ideal sort of cross-section, and this is what I think you should shoot for eventually, depending on costs. And I may tag-team with another gentleman to finish off my talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ron Meddak of Leavenheim. So, I'm going to try to continue for Steve because of the shortened time. Can we go back? Yeah. So, here, Steve is...
Right. I think they're, hang on until they get the timing correct here. There you go. Perfect.
All right, all set?
Yep, you're all set.
Great. So, here we're showing an ideal cross-section with eight foot.
Hang on. Shouldn't it be five? What should it be, two minutes? Okay, sorry. Okay.
We're set now?
Now, we're set. Thank you. Sorry, little technical difficulty.
No problem.
Yeah.
So, here we're showing an ideal cross-section with eight-foot parking lanes on both sides, three-foot door buffers that provide safety to both motorists exiting their vehicles and to the cyclists, and then two-foot bike buffers. For the westbound bikeway, a buffered Class II bike lane would be ideal, space permitting. The next choice would be an unbuffered bike lane. And last would be to have sharrows. Westbound is downhill, so cyclists can take the lane pretty easily and largely keep up with vehicle traffic. Now, this is third, but still safe alternative, or safer. We're going to conclude by pointing out two potential problem areas. One is where the westbound bikeway merges into a right-turn pocket at the Nardo intersection. That's basically a mixing zone. And the problem there is that the bikes are going to be coming down. Once again, this is downhill slope. They can, oftentimes, are going to have a great deal of speed as they enter that mixing zone, and there are going to be cars that are going to be converging from the left. So, that is going to be a significant point of conflict, and there's going to be a lot of potential for right-hook crashes there. The bicycles are going to be going there, are going to be, some of them are going to be going through. Some will be turning right, but many would be going straight through, and cars are going to be turning right. So, there's a big, there's not much of a mixing zone allowed there, especially considering the speed that I would anticipate a lot of the cyclists to have, especially on the e-bikes. The second point of conflict, it's a very serious one. This is at the SDA entrance. It's near where the crash was that the previous speaker spoke about, where her husband ended up in the trauma unit and had life-threatening injuries. And thankfully, he's doing much, much better now. This is at the SDA entrance, and the present bikeway, the previously described SDA entrance area has conflicts between vehicles, buses, bicycles, and pedestrians. More thought should be put into these in the short term, and please proceed with option B, but also consider ways...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. My name is Adam. I'm in the neighborhood off of Melba, just around the corner. So I use Santa Fe all the time, on foot, in a car, and on a bike. I've seen a lot of close calls, and most of them are in the intersections that aren't complete. They're confusing and ambiguous. It's not clear where I should be, where the students should be, where the cars should be in most of those cases. Please finish those intersections as soon as you can, and please finish the portions of the roadway that are agreed upon. And please look for ways to remove bicycle traffic from primary thoroughfares. So Melba would be a much better place to have bikes. Benita would be a much better place to have bikes, and it's also where SDA has their bike parking. So if we can get as much of the traffic that doesn't have to be on Santa Fe off of it, I think would be good for everyone. That's all. Thank you.[662.79][662.79](applause)
Following Grace will be Nicole Moreland, David Pierce, and then Stephanie Wilson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to meet you, all of you, and have a talk today. My name is Grace, and I'm 16, and I go to graduate school around East Nada here. First of all, thanks for making some of the safety signals in these roads. As a teen driver, I often pass these streets to go to school. So from my perspective, Santa Fe Drive West is the one of the only street in this area that actually feels safe to walk or bike on. It's how students get to San Diego Academy every day, and it's make a huge difference for protecting their safety. But the opinions being discussed tonight don't keep people safe, and none of them are work. They all take away the 10-foot lanes that slow cars down and make the street safer for everyone. When lane goes wider, car goes faster, and when car goes faster, people usually die in crashes. And that's not just an opinion. It's proven by the Federal Highway Administration. Taking out safety features now would be a step backward. Instead of removing what works, the city should finish the project and make it even better. Please just keep the 10-foot lanes and keep students safe. Please do something to improve that, not just remove it. Thank you.[780.23][780.23](applause)
Hello, my name is Nicole Moreland. I live just a couple blocks from the project, and I also was a member of the city's infrastructure task force. I care very much about the safety outcomes of this project, as well as being prudent with city funds. I'm here to express support for keeping the significant safety improvements already constructed and making sensible targeted fixes rather than a complete redo. The narrower driving lanes have succeeded in calming traffic, and the separated bike lanes have reduced bike-car conflicts. The back-end angled parking greatly improves the safety of exiting a parking spot compared to head-in parking, and people have learned a lot about how to do it correctly over the past few months. I've seen a lot fewer cars parking head-in illegally. I walked the block between Nardo and Benita today after school let out and watched hundreds of vehicles go by, including a school bus and several large trucks and vans. I didn't see anyone having any difficulty navigating the roadway. Now that drivers are more familiar with the layout, it seems that overall comfort levels may have increased. In general, I recommend preserving separated bike lanes and bike safety rather than widening driving lanes. With regard to the specific options in the staff report, I am particularly alarmed by option B. Removing the eastbound separated bike lane and replacing it with a buffered bike lane would be a big step backwards in safety. Cars would need to cross the bike lane to park, and buses would need to cross it to get to the relocated bus stop. Retaining separated bike lanes on both sides of the street between Nardo and Benita is a must. Option B appears to be the least safe and most costly and should be a non-starter. Rather than spending a huge amount of money to start over with options A through C, let's make a few targeted fixes: parking cut-throughs, addressing bike lane misalignment, and smoothing the entry at the SDA driveway. However, the large-scale projects contemplated in options A through C would be an irresponsible use of city funds. Having served on the city's infrastructure task force, which was tasked with developing a prioritization rubric for capital projects across the city, I know that the project backlog is quite significant due to lack of funding. City funding decisions are a zero-sum game. What work would the city not do if it chose to spend an additional $1.3 to $1.9 million on Santa Fe West? Would you have to scale back the Santa Fe East phase of the project? Would you have to postpone or cancel safety improvements on other corridors?
Hello, city council members. My name is David Pierce. Get it out of the way first. I'm from Carlsbad, but my parents were high school sweethearts at San Diego, San Diego High School back in the '60s. So I hope that means it's okay if I speak on this area. My main point is when there are no minor consequences for bad driving, there will inevitably be major consequences of bad driving. In other words, when people can get away with bad driving habits, they keep those habits for life. With this project, I have three specific aspects of it, where all the proposed changes would decrease safety by getting rid of minor consequences for bad driving. The first is travel lane width. When travel lanes are 10 feet wide, people start to feel a bit restricted. That is a minor consequence of driving too fast, so they slow down. And then when they slow down, that helps mitigate major consequences of crashes. Second, parallel parking spaces on the other side of a bike lane. Some drivers simply do not encounter bicycles very much, so they may have a habit of simply immediately driving out of, in or out of, parallel spaces without checking the bike lane. They keep doing that until they do hit a cyclist in the bike lane. And finally, the raised eastbound bike lane at the western end of the project. Imagine, if you will, you're a drunk driver. You're having trouble keeping in your lane. If there's a curb immediately to your right with the raised bike lane, if you're starting to swerve to the right, you'll just glance off that curb and you'll go, "Oh, wow. Maybe I should slow down a lot and maybe not drive drunk next time." Instead, if you get rid of the raised bike lane and it is at street level, instead of being a curb, that drunk driver could hit a kid. This is not a hypothetical. Two months ago in Carlsbad on Highway 101, a cyclist was killed by a drunk driver in the bike lane because there was nothing separating the two from each other. Thank you for your
All right. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Wilson. I live in Encinitas. My son goes to SDA. He's right there with his friend Thomas. That's Theo. His safety is paramount to me. He rides his e-bike to school every day. He doesn't have a full frontal lobe yet. He's, you know, 15. He hates it when I say that, but that means a lot of poor decision-making. Sorry, honey. But, you know, they can't be... He has passed that he's supposed to take his bike on, and I don't love him being on Santa Fe. He's not even supposed to ride his bike on Santa Fe. He doesn't listen to me all the time. Sometimes I pull him up on my little map on my phone, and I see this little like bubble, like little bubble on my phone like going where he's not supposed to go. So, you know, I think, you know, my point being is that their safety is paramount. We've had some losses of young kids in our neighborhood, and they've been because of decisions of the drivers or the acts of the drivers and not necessarily the kids. So even though they're not the most aware people, like we have drivers who are driving distracted or, you know, making poor decisions in other ways that are putting our children at risk. To have this, you know, roadway, have it be set up the way it is, where we have the participation, sorry, the separated bike lane from the street, to have that partition and what that does to keep the children safe, I mean, I think that's paramount. And also, I think what strikes me is I have a whole bunch of notes here that I was going to read through, but what kind of caught my attention is that SDA wasn't consulted with ahead of putting together all of these plans. So the most significant building amidst all of this, where our kids are walking and riding to school, nobody took the time to meet with them. And I suspect that that wasn't an oversight. To me, that feels like maybe it was done with some intent, and with that decision means that you weren't putting our children first. So, thank you.[1208.01][1208.01](applause)
Next three speakers, Joy Shepherd, followed by Theo Wilson, and then Tom Hyde.
Hi, Joy Shepherd from Cardiff. I'll make it fast. Let's just please keep... We made these great improvements to make everything safer for our kids, and it is hard for people to learn new things. So could we just please keep our safety improvements we have for now? And the city already spent $1.4 million on this project using local and state funds, including grants for safe routes to school. If the city removes these improvements or doesn't complete all the improvements that they were supposed to do, we would have to repay those grants. And the proposal would... Projects are around $3 to $3.5 million. Well, you know, projects are never, rarely completed on budget. So nobody wants to have more construction on that road. And as Jim, you pointed out, we don't know exactly how this new development is going to affect the street. We should wait, at least until we have more information of that. So we know there's a lot of better ways our city could spend this $3 million. Thank you so much.[1302.23][1302.23](applause)
Good evening. I'm Theo Wilson. I am a recently added student to SDA. I'm a ninth grader. And the bike lane going west, right in front of the school, it feels... When I'm riding on it, like I'm super worried. I feel like I'm like, I have to like dodge obstacles and stuff, and especially during like a lunch rush or something. It just feels very poorly prepared to handle bike traffic at all. So I think whichever plan would be flesh out the west hitting a bike lane the most should be taken into strong consideration. I'd like to donate my time to whoever needs it most. Thank you.[1355.86][1355.86](laughter)
Hi, my name is Tom Hyde. I'm a freshman at SDA also, and I ride my bike to school every single day on Santa Fe. And my primary issue is east of Benita and Santa Fe where the bike lane appears, and then it merges into a sharrow in which cars are going down at, as was shown like way earlier, up to 40 miles an hour going west, which is extremely dangerous for a bike that's only, if you're only going 20 miles an hour, that's double the speed, and something's going to happen if you're riding in the same lane as a car. So what I think needs to be done is on Santa Fe, east of Benita, heading west, there needs to be a bike lane, as was in the original project but was removed. But it looks like it is being added in all three, if I'm right? Okay. And then, so I think that's good. And then I think the way that the main area that's being changed differently in all three plans is right now, I think that what was said earlier about the man who had heavy injuries to himself because he crashed, I think that's very interesting because the path that goes in front of the school, as was like mentioned earlier with that full walkthrough photos, is not very good. It's not very high quality, and it's just very unsafe for people that are riding. And then I think I noticed that for past Nardo and Santa Fe, they wanted to remove the bollards that go towards the 5 freeway. I don't think that is safe because many people ride their bikes on there, and many people are walking there, students, every single day, and combining that with the traffic that is, as I said before, going like 40 miles an hour, even though it is still in the bike lane, it makes it less safe to not have the bollards there. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.[1480.01][1480.01](applause)
Next three speakers, Julie Thunder, followed by Alexander Berryhill-Williams, and then
I can't help but say, you guys did really good, considering you don't have frontal lobes.[1502.23][1502.23](laughter) I was impressed. I love that the kids were actually riding the bikes that were trying to keep safe, took the time, a lot of time, to come here and speak. Julie Thunder, Cardiff, frequent driver of Santa Fe Drive. I support option B. My second choice would be C. I would like to make a couple notes. Any protected bike lanes that uses a curb to protect the cyclist aren't protection. They don't offer protection. They're not safe. In Cardiff, we've seen multiple cars catch their wheel on the curb and hop the curb and crash into the bike lane, multiple times, ever since that South Highway 101 installation was put in. And after over 40 bike accidents... Oh, that's the second part, is that bikes catch their wheel on the curb, and then they crash within the protected bike lane. On southbound Highway 101 in Cardiff, after they put the curbs in, we've had over 40 bike crashes in an area of highway that previously had almost zero crashes for the previous 10 years. So protected is not protected. So keep that in mind. Number two, do not wait to do this. Lawsuits are coming. I predict the next one won't be from a cyclist. I think it's going to be from a senior citizen who tried to get to the eye doctor or the dentist and had to climb a 12-inch curb, which my 86-year-old mother, who takes herself to her doctor's appointments, would not be able to navigate. There's no way around it. I just did it. Not only is there no way around it, when you step up the 11-inch curb, you're then standing on the dumbest thing, these big rocks, and you're trying to... I literally was looking at the rocks, and I ride bikes. I know to look for them. I was standing on the rocks, getting ready to step down. I forgot to check for bikes. I guarantee you, some sweet 70-year-old woman is going to get taken out on that thing, and you're going to have another lawsuit. Do not wait to fix this. Number three, the $3 million you're talking about spending is $3 million to fix a $2 million mistake...
Thank you.
...that the previous two mayors created.[1653.01][1653.01](applause)
Hi, Alexander. I've been an Encinitas resident all my life. I attended SDA from 2015 to 2019. I'd like to say, please keep the Santa Fe improvements as they are. Please keep the protected bike lanes, which research has repeatedly proven are safer for cyclists. Please, please keep the narrower driving lanes, which research has repeatedly shown decreases car speeds and improves safety. Please keep the back-end parking, which, again, research has repeatedly shown is safer because it increases visibility for people parking and leaving the parking. And additionally, let's see. Right. So I do not support any of the options here, but in particular, I am very shocked by option B, which would put the bike lane between traffic and parking. I don't understand how this option is even being considered when we have the bike lane already behind parking, which is the world standard of where bike lanes should be to avoid conflict with cars. Finally, I'd like to say, please build the protected intersections that were planned as part of this project. Not just a green striping through the intersections, but proper protected intersections that provide physical protection and a space for cyclists to wait when they are making left turns. There are going to be a lot of turn movements along these two intersections, as well as elsewhere on the corridor. These protected intersections are very important and should be completed as was originally intended and as was promised.
Sally Fect, are you here? Final four speakers, Jane Hendricks, followed by Diana Cutlow, then Russell Lavann, and finally Angie Kapitanakis.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Jane Hendricks, and I live in Lucadia. And I used to take my grandson to SDA back in the '90s, so I'm really not familiar with what's going on right now. familiar with what's going on right now. But I do know that our solutions were carpooling and walking. So I would like to suggest that to the families of Encinitas, that maybe they should reduce their cars, like, not everybody should have their own car. They could carpool, and they could do a lot more inventive ideas to stop the traffic in Encinitas. The other thing, I really am surprised that the city did not speak to SDA. I mean, that high school has been there since 1936. And my stepdaughter went there, and then her son went there. So I'm kind of familiar with Santa Fe Drive, but not lately. I think that you really need to fix that, fix those parking spaces for that woman who has a business there, because she's losing money. And that was really inconsiderate of you to not even let her have some parking spaces in front of her business. And secondly, the most important thing is that mother, when she talked about the safety of her children, she was absolutely right. It's all about the safety. It has nothing to do with the convenience. It has nothing to do with anything but the safety of your children. And that's the most important thing in Encinitas. And that's why people move here, because this town was supposed to be a safe town to raise your family. And let's keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Ayers, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Diana Cutlow. I'm here this evening representing Senator Blakespear. First, I'd like to thank the council and our sheriffs for your efforts on education and on traffic enforcement that's been really increased lately. You are saving lives already. From everything this council and community have said, safer streets, especially for the young people who ride, walk, and drive to the many schools near the Santa Fe corridor, is a goal that we all share. So I'd like to take this opportunity to reiterate Senator Blakespear's support for the responsible use of state funds allocated to the Santa Fe corridor to make streets safer for all users of the roadway. As a reminder, the project was designed in early 2020 to serve several problems along the corridor, such as poor circulation, significant safety hazards around access to SDA, insufficient drainage, ADA compliance, and more. The changes, which were funded partly by a $3 million gift that Senator Blakespear was able to get added to the 2023 state budget, added protected bike lanes and walking paths, enhanced crosswalks, and lowered the speed for vehicles. We all know from the conversations tonight that that slower speed does save lives. These changes may take time to get used to, but according to the city's own speed reports, speeds have been reduced, and pickups and drop-offs in that area need reduced speed in order to make all the turns that are necessary. Completing the protected intersections at McKinnon Nardo and Windsor Bonita, and making modifications that you've talked about tonight can address some of the remaining issues. The senator respectfully asks that the city make adjustments to make sure that the project is complete and working as intended, that you maintain the core safety components, including protected bikeways, walking paths, and reduced lane widths. We all want safer streets, and you're in the position to make that a reality. Thank you.
Good evening, Russell Lavann. The first thing I'll say is, I love the phrase, improve, don't remove. I think we need to complete the project first. It's hard to evaluate the project if it's not done. There are a number of features, like the intersections, that never got finished. So it's, it's not fair to evaluate it and start tearing it out and spending more money on something that we haven't gotten used to yet and that isn't complete. I agree that the bike lanes, especially the westbound bike lane on the north side, need some serious improvement as far as signage, or when you're on a road and there's a curve ahead, guess what? There's a sign or there's some indication on the road that there's a curve ahead. And there are none of those on the bike path. So although I didn't agree with a number of things, one of the gentlemen said, the pictures, as you approach the parking lot at SDA, that, that bike lane, you're going downhill, you curve to the right, there's nothing indicating that there's a dirt patch in front of you. And then you have to go across the driveway, and then it's uneven pavement. So those are things that can be easily fixed for less than $1 million. So I highly recommend we work on fixing those things first. One thing I noticed, and maybe it's changed in the last two weeks, but there was no signage indicating no head-in parking, or reverse parking only. So as much as I find it amazing that people head-in park in a reverse angle parking spot, they're doing it. But if we put some signage up saying no head-in parking, then maybe that will alleviate some of those problems. And one last thing, I really think we should keep separated bike lanes. My assumption is, when you're driving down the road, and you're looking to make a right turn, or enter into the cross street, you should be looking at where you're going. Now, when you're driving straight nowadays, no one's looking at where they're going. Thank you.
Following Angie, one more speaker, it's Evan Weinberg.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to hear from everyone tonight. I just wanted to come up as a mom. I've got two girls who are at SDA now. They're in 10th and 11th grade. And I have a son who's going to be an incoming freshman. They love the school, they love the community, but they really don't love their bike ride. It's really scary. They've almost been hit multiple times biking, especially when they're leaving the school parked at the stadium. They both play sports, so they leave sometimes late at night, sometimes when it's dark. And they're driving up the street. And while I love the idea of a protected bike lane, I think it sounds great on paper, they're not protected. I think the picture had, what, 17 points of egress coming in and out? So it's protected, not protected, protected, not protected. And when cars are turning, because the lanes are so narrow, you almost have to make a 90. And with the vertical parking spaces, the backed-in spaces like this, it's like looking through vertical blinds. Drivers can't really see. They don't expect kids to be coming up the hill because they can't see them. So then they're trying to do this and get in fast before someone honks at them or gets mad for trying to make a turn. I've seen so many cars bumper to bumper through bobby rigs. When we turn, someone stops because there's a biker, they bonk. We live off Santa Fe. I drive that street multiple times a day. And the system, just as is, is not working. And there's no reason to keep something that's blatantly dangerous for the kids that you're trying to protect at the school that that street's in front of. So I really urge you to please consider any of the other options that will please make this better. Also, too, I mean, it's new drivers going in and out of the school. It's scary for me. I drive a big car. I have a Ford Momobile. And trying to turn in and out, when I go left out of the school, I'm like, okay, I think I can go. And then I get into the lane, and I'm trying to hide in the center divide, and my car barely fits. And cars are going this way, and backed up in this way, and nobody wants to let you in. So the narrow lanes really are an issue. And I understand wanting to slow traffic, but the speed law limit is posted, and it's there for a reason. People should obey the law. I don't think you need to make the road dangerous for people to obey the law. That's just causing other problems. Thanks. So I appreciate all of it. Also, too, having the lanes narrow is really a problem for getting to the hospital. My husband's an OB. He delivers babies. He's missed deliveries. Patients have missed getting to the hospital. Traffic's jammed up. There's nowhere to go. Because of the planters that are blocking, that are also really dangerous for people to step up and down, you can't pull over. So there's no way to be safe. So I really think eliminating those planters is probably the biggest first step, so that people do have a little more space. And thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Evan Weinberg. I live on Santa Fe. And we've got to experience all of this firsthand. I think that the consensus seems to be to improve and not remove. I have to concur. You know, given our daily experience, we are west of Nardo. The sidewalk bike lane is very challenging. You know, turning that into a traditional bike lane with some bollards, I think would be great, solve the problems for these guys and for all the confused bike riders, pedestrians, and vehicles. Other than that, it'd be great to see the project get finished, then make some decisions. There's a lot more work to do on the east side of Santa Fe that is incomplete, dangerous, and needs, needs to be completed. So that's it. Thanks so much.
That concludes public speakers on this item.
Okay, we'll take a 15-minute break and be back here in 15 minutes. On, on time, please. Ready? I'm cutting you off. Okay, we'll come back to order here. Are you, are we ready on? Good. Okay. So now we, now we'll move into council deliberation. And I've got, I've got Deputy Mayor lines up first.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to kick it off. One of the, I want to make a few comments, and then I want to propose a way forward, a pathway forward. I first want to say that I've seen many of my neighbors here. I live a block off of Santa Fe. I have for 13 years. And I think by virtue of that, I may understand this segment of Santa Fe Road better than most up here. So I want to speak from my experience, and from hearing my neighbors, and from hearing the dialogue today. I want to reflect on that a little bit, because we've all been involved in this topic now for a while, talking about Santa Fe. And I remember when it was first opened up, and it wasn't, it wasn't finished, and it still isn't finished, but it was first opened up, we had a public meeting where we got comments. And we, the majority of people at that meeting did support improve, not remove. So I was, I was glad to, to see that at that time. I feel like there's even more than just a simple majority of people now, that, that now that they've gotten familiar with it, that they believe that we should take a measured approach, improve, not remove. And so I was glad to see that evolution of thought. So I think that, that the problem is that it isn't finished. And I would support that, definitely, that we want to go in, and we want to finish the intersections. We want to finish the transitions to the roadway for the interim situation. And then when the east section of Santa Fe gets built, then, then we'll have a completely safe corridor all the way to El Comuna Real. But to finish the project, some targeted fixes along the way that we can, we can target to improve the intersections and the corridor, and then to wait for the new development that's coming in on the street. Now, I say this measured approach because a lot of times, that's the best way to use our public money. What we are is, we need to be fiscally responsible. And we really don't want to waste almost $2 million of the hard-earned taxpayers' money to pull out, to take out a project that was safe and make it less safe. And I don't want my name in the future tied to that decision here on City Council. And so I would like to present an option that would be more measured, where we finish the project, we then make some limited and targeted improvements, important things that some people have brought up. But we don't completely remove 50% of the project, that we wait, and then we take data after it's complete, and we understand how people are using it, and how, how the data comes out as far as, is it safer? I am thrilled to hear, even though the project's not complete, that it's already slowed the traffic down. That's a win. And I want more wins out of this corridor. So that, those are my comments I'm going to kick off with. And, and I would like to call this option I'm putting forward, option D, because it's not fully represented here in what we're seeing in front of us. There's bits and pieces of it. But I would like us to come back with an option D that represents this more measured approach, and, and see if we can get the community, the majority of the community already wants this. And I think this City Council owes it to the majority of the community who said they want this measured approach, for us to do our homework, and come back and represent that, that option D. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember O'Hara.
Boy, all right. First off, I want to start by thanking everybody who came and spoke tonight, regardless of your feelings on this project. I really appreciate the amount of time everyone put into this. Obviously, this is a challenging issue in the, in the community, you know. And I know tonight, whatever we accomplish, there's going to be an attempt to come up with a lot of accommodations to make this, this safer. But I want to step back from that for a second. In our civic life, we rely on the principle that advocacy groups provide specialized insight, whether driven by data, professional expertise, deep community roots. When a group claiming to be nonpartisan in expertise, citing safety, community values, or fiscal responsibility, is in reality serving a clear predetermined partisan agenda, it's not really, it's not even really an oversight. It's a calculated tactic that undermines the very foundation of what we're trying to do here in Encinitas, which is create safer streets. This deception breeds a lot of distrust, distrust. We're always up here trying to sow the seeds of trust, every one of us, and every one of you who comes to these meetings. And I hate to see that tampered with. And you heard it tonight, and a lot of the repeating propaganda from groups and emails, certainly these are the ones that were sent by Encinitas Bike Walk, or repeated over and over again to the number of people they sent those out to, and the groups they sent them to, the proliferation of groups like this claiming to be nonpartisan, and have nonpartisan expertise and advocacy while operating with a clear partisan agenda. It's a significant problem in Encinitas, as well as other California cities at this point. When I move to this project, the problem isn't that it's not finished. The problem is that this project in front of us is a result of a group of people prioritizing politics and agenda over public safety. And that's what we see in front of us now. Want to talk about some events. We have a group, a group that meets here called the School Liaison Committee. Some things that have been said here tonight along these lines, that we never spoke with the school. The October School Liaison Committee meeting, of which I chair, as well as Councilmember Schaefer. It's a long quote, and it's a little bit hard to hear because it's only audio, but you can hear it where the principal says, since, I'm cutting deep down into it, I've got the whole quote for anyone that wants to see it, but, "Since then, once they understood that it was important for us to continue that conversation, we had biweekly meetings with it. Was like the person overseeing it with, and it looks like it was hard to hear, was there. So we had city folks with construction people, and it was really helpful because we were actually able to give some input, talk about our concerns, and I know that our voices were heard." I appreciate that. So I hope as we're moving forward, I do the same, and I continue the conversation with the schools. We have that meeting monthly, and we always talk about Santa Fe. The meeting that was referred to, I initiated that meeting. My phone rings both ways. So we get into this propaganda, people working together, pushing political movement. I cut into a group like Encinitas Bike Walk. Their original support of this design, and, and full support of it, then making adjustments to the direction, for the, for the design of it, I believe was by Blue Zone originally, then coming back with a supportive new design of 100% support. Then they said, well, let's suggest that people live and learn. Then it became improve, don't remove. Now it's fiscal responsibility. The narrative keeps changing. Because the public of the survey we had overwhelmingly said, we don't feel safe with this. And it wasn't even, it wasn't even And it wasn't even marginally conclusive. We're like 90% of the people who responded to us. So, why do they continue with this narrative? What's the reason for it? You've got to ask yourself, what's going on here? What is the bigger picture? And of course, we see Dan Cutlow, thank you for showing up, we appreciate you here each week, speaking for Senator Blakespear and her support for this project. We fast-forward. She's got 100,000 miles of road, and we're talking, she's hyper-focused on 300 yards in front of SDA. And I think to her press conference, I got invited to, and I think to members of who spoke at that, Encinitas Bike Walk, of course, Catherine Blakespear, Senator Blakespear, I'm sorry, she deserves that title. And I think to the comment that multiple people said to me after the fact, "Well, you know, sometimes Jim, as a leader, people don't know what they need. Your job is to make the policy, and they'll figure it out because you make good policy." That's a scary...where I sit, that's a scary statement. So, I move forward, and I wonder why these groups are so bent on grabbing this. Why this propaganda? Groups employ this strategy because neutrality is a powerful shield. It's a partisan message delivered with a supposedly neutral messenger that gains unwarranted what's called the halo effect. Grains access and credibility that openly politically political group would not have earned through the debate. So, if they said, "We are Catherine's people," it'd be a different story right now, wouldn't They use something called astroturfing. That's what they say, "We're a grassroots movement." They recruit supporters and gain public buy-in from individuals across the political spectrum who might otherwise reject them if they knew that was partisan choice they were making and not a bipartisan or nonpartisan choice. Often allows them to circumvent rules. I know that some of those groups were having private meetings with staff along the way, on your dime, unagendized, but these doors locked. Think about that. They control the narrative in this position. By positioning themselves as the voice of reason and true experts, these groups attempt to frame the debate so that any opposition is immediately labeled as irrational, emotional, or ironically partisan. The essence of masquerade as a nonpartisan is a strategic tool to maximize influence while minimizing political resistance. Quantify these people as what I would call a partisan think tank. While this might describe their actual function, it contrasts with the claim of being nonpartisan. It's organizations that aim to appear nonpartisan while clearly serving an ideological agenda. I'm going to make this council statement on what I think is really important and what the truth of the matter is. Truth of the matter is, the Encinitas City Council firmly stands for safety for all road users in Encinitas. Our commitment to pro-bicycle, pro-pedestrian, and pro-vehicular guided by principles of safe and effective traffic engineering. Any reevaluation of infrastructure is a necessary step to ensure transportation solutions that meet the varying needs of our diverse community and all the modes of transportation in which people use. Rather than an opposition to cycling, student safety, or as we're hearing, safe speeds and crossings, I'm going to hear that that is our top concern tonight. So, I'm going to yield the floor because I'm going to have plenty to say about this and ways we can make this safer. I'm really looking forward to it. But let's get to be transparent in this conversation. Let's get back to what's important. Let's get back to public safety, not politics. I yield.
Okay, I'm up next, and I'm going to bring it back a little more about this project. And I'm going to go back a little higher level. So, our goals should be safe for student, pedestrian, and bicyclist safety. It should also be driver and vehicular safety. It should be traffic flowing reasonably well and not being diverted to neighboring streets, small neighboring streets. Emergency vehicles should be able to navigate through the congested traffic quickly and safely. School drop-off and pickup and queuing should go well. That's kind of the high-low. I think we would all agree on every one of those. And so, I've said this earlier when I talk about traffic calming. I support traffic calming. I support well-designed, well-executed. I support traffic calming on Santa Fe, well-designed and well-executed. From what I've seen, it was not well-designed, it was also not well-executed in places. And now, it's our job to figure out what can we do to fix it, obviously trying not to waste money. So, I go back to our general plan. Our general plan talks about safety for pedestrians, for vehicles, for bicyclists, all of them, the circulation element. And then, I go down to Policy 2.4, you've probably heard me quote it, I'm going to quote it again. "When considering circulation patterns and standards, primary consideration will be given to the preservation of character and safety of the existing residential neighborhoods. Where conflicts arise between convenience of motorists versus and neighborhood safety, community character preservation, the latter will have first priority. Safety and community character preserve over commuter convenience." That is our general plan, that is the highest, that's been there from probably the beginning of the city. So, with that, I move on to...I've got a fundamental question that I keep hearing, and I thought the person from the Venture Church hit it on the nose. We're putting on the south side, we're putting the separated bike lane, and in-between that, we're putting diagonally parked cars, vans, trucks, everything. And what I have seen is we've set up about half a dozen, actually, I think it's seven, right-hook situations where we already know we've had lawsuits, and we've essentially had to pay on those lawsuits, where we've had other right-hooks. Anytime you separate a bike lane from the road, you run the risk of not seeing that bicyclist moving along now at speeds of 25, 35 miles an hour easily with electric bikes. And we've got now seven opportunities just on that segment on the block from Nardo up to Bonita. And it's bad. I think we are going to run into problems. You heard it directly from the church person that was right there, deals with it every day. He said exactly what I was going to say. You have to stop for the, I'll call it the bicycle lane intersection, and then you have to get out there, you're blinded by the van. I've got some pictures I could show you that I've spent more than half a dozen times out there during pickup and drop-off for two hours each time, taking pictures of everything. And we saw...we've seen a lot of similar pictures, but there are a lot of problems out here. I'm naming off just the big ones right now. And so, I would compare it to other streets. So, let's look at 101, Streetscape. Also, not necessarily executed perfectly, but I've heard tonight how great it is. The vast majority of that parking is parallel parking on the other side of the bike lane. It's not a separated bike lane through Lucadia 101, right? And it works, and people like it. The other thing that's different up there is there's a lot more buffer room. We have a handful, just a handful of backend diagonal parking up there. Two main differences up there on 101. Number one, you can't cut across the median to park the wrong way, so people don't do it. Number two, there's a huge, not only door guard, bike lane, bike lane buffer, so there's room to pull over and do the backing in. I thought Molly, your exhibit showed the mechanics of using those properly, and I think it was implemented there. On this segment, the design and the execution has the 10-foot minimal travel lane immediately adjacent to the front of the cars or trucks in that it's very hard to pull in. I've had trouble doing it, my wife, I've taken...I could show you pictures. The other thing is I keep seeing people pull up right behind the person about to back in, they've got their turn signal on the whole bit, and then the car at least...I have pictures of three different incidents, just in the times I've been out there, the car had to back up to let the car back in. You know, it's just parallel parking, I don't see that happen. People understand, they've been trained how to do that. So, let me talk about a couple...I'm just hitting the big stuff right now. So, backend parking, I have a question for staff. The survey results you shared with us before, do we have those available tonight? My recollection was 900 out of 1,000 respondents roughly did not like backend parking. Our own...I know we have a lot of people here today, but I heard that loud and clear. And so, I don't know if you have that, if you can respond.
Unfortunately, I don't have that slide available here tonight. I did review that earlier today, and I did look at it, and those numbers were correct. For about 1,000 respondents, there was a large number, over 800, that did not like backend parking.
Yeah, it was almost 900, as I recall. So, I want to talk about...so, what are we talking about tonight? I think most everybody agrees that a fix needs to be done west of Nardo, that the garbage cans on the bike lane/sidewalk doesn't work, and dropping it down would be good. If I could keep the bollards, if we can figure out a way to keep the bollards, I'd do that. But I think we have to have a, not a separated, a bike lane, a dedicated bike lane where...and we have to figure out where we're going to put garbage cans so that we're not blocking bikes and we're not blocking sidewalks. But that should be intuitive and obvious. The section we're really talking about tonight is primarily just the block of SDA. And so, if I look at the north side, the westbound, what we have there can work. I do agree that we need to fix and straighten out and probably mark better the bike lane, the jogs in it, the uneven pavement is a recipe for disaster. I really appreciate the fact we moved the boulders. The eastbound, I just don't see it working because of the...in my fundamental background, I look at data, and I look at the right-hook situation, there are too many right-hooks to make that a separated bike lane segment. That's the only place we're talking about taking it out. We're not talking about ripping up the entire place, other than we've got to take out a lot of strange backend parking that is highly unpopular with...based on a survey we took. And then, I'm trying to think...yeah, so backend parking, so I think I've said most of the big things I want to...and true to my word, Judy, I do have a specification of all the detail problems I see. I can go into those as...hopefully, they'll come up, and I'll just check them off so I don't have to go into them. But at this point, I kind of frame where I'm coming from right now. I think we have a problem we need to fix. I think it is a modification to what we have. Unfortunately, I think the diagonal parking and the 10-foot lanes are too small. If I shared all the pictures with you, you would see buses, school buses, passing each other, both 18 inches each into the center lane. I have a picture of an Edco truck two feet in, I've got a Bronco about two feet over, I've got other trucks in the middle lane. They all think...and by the way, at the time they're passing there, I got the picture of the curb that's within a foot or less of their other tire. And so, it's pushing everybody in. And ultimately, as I said earlier, and Dr. Cap didn't speak, but I think he summed it up last time when we heard testimony, you've got to be able to get ambulances and fire trucks through this at peak time of traffic. That is an absolute mandatory requirement in my specification. So, as we go through this, that I'll be critiquing or putting in my two cents on detail, and I have a bunch of other smaller things that I won't bother with right now. And with that, I will yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
Well, for me, it isn't just about bike mobility. That's important, but it's, you know, it's mobility for everybody. It's mobility for bikes, it's mobility for pedestrians and vehicles. Safety is number one. I have young kids, my safety for my kids and your kids is paramount. You know, in my best educated opinion, it's going to differ than a lot of people in here. It's just the way it is. I mean, clearly, we've heard both sides, maybe three sides, of people that want, like this, don't like it, wait. To me, it makes...a lot of this, of what we've talked about, or what we will be talking about, is how can we make this safer? How can we make this more, for me, intuitive? How can we make this so that it is safe for everybody? Steve, I can appreciate your presentation, the pictures were great. It was eye-opening, to be honest, to see, you know, the walkthrough on, you know, I think we've all walked through this ourselves, whether it was with a traffic engineer or with staff, or going through it yourself. Those patches and whatnot, that's...those are dangerous. Clearly, they're there because something happened, or it was seen that something could There was a...somebody had a...maybe it was you, Steve, that had that, those potential blind spots, it was like 19 or 16 on the north or south side of Santa Fe. That's just, for me, that's with the protected bike lane or the separated bike lane, that's tough. That's a tough one to swallow, to say, "Oh, well, all those right hooks, the block vision because of the separated bike lanes." Look, on paper, I think it makes a lot of sense, the separated bike lanes. But I think in...I've mentioned it before, I've ridden thousands of miles on a bike. I don't commute on my bike, but I've ridden thousands of miles on my triathlon bike. So, whether that was through cities, whether it was through country roads, the option B of the buffered bike lane, for me, that is intuitive. I followed...I know where the...I know when I'm driving, and I know when I'm riding. I know where I'm riding, and I know when I'm driving, what to look at. So, for me, that makes a lot of sense. Let's see. Can we wait on this? Should we wait on this? I mean, clearly, there's been three traumas already that were taken, other accidents. I spoke to a bike shop owner here in Encinitas. She also lives on Santa Fe, actually, right near Venture Church. She had three...her friends had three accidents. And, you know, this was a completely like...I didn't bring this up to her, I was dropping off a sign, and we ended up talking. She...I mentioned why her sign was late, not in one day, and she understood. Then, all of a sudden, it became a conversation. So, then she said...I listened to all the...I listened to the council meetings, and we ended up talking about Santa Fe because she knew it was coming up. Unfortunately, tonight's thing was not on YouTube, so she wasn't able to listen to it. But we talked, and so she told me about three accidents that her and her friends had, three of her friends, not her, but she commutes to work from Santa Fe down to the 101. And she didn't like it. She thought it was unsafe. She told me, she gave me detailed explanation of where she went, how to get...she got into her house from the road, how she left her house from her...how she got onto the Santa Fe, what roads she used. And for me, that was another one of those things where it was...it was...I can't think of the word, but...well, I didn't ask her. Yeah, exactly, I didn't ask her for these, for her opinion. She gave it to me. And that's happened throughout. I mean, I've mentioned it before again, my shop is on the 101, and you wouldn't believe how many people stopped by in a day. Just this week, I had three people stop by within two hours of me opening to ask me about Santa Fe, to talk to me about Santa Fe, whether they liked it or they didn't like it. And I'm happy to talk to those people. And this wasn't even just residents, I mean, a resident meeting. These are people just stopping in to chat with me. So, can we wait? I don't think we can because that's more time for more accidents to happen. I think this needs to happen soon. So, I guess I'll yield for right now.
Sorry, Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor O'Hara. I want to say real quick, Joy, I don't know how many times we're going to talk about districts up here, but it's pretty offensive when you talk about how you've lived there for 13 years and, you know, like, I graduated from Bethlehem, you know, I graduated from Ocho Nola, I graduated from Oak Crest, he graduated from San Diego. I went to San Diego. I spent my entire formative life on that road. My parents lived at the end of Santa Fe. So, I get what you're saying, but it's kind of offensive to say that you kind of have a pulse on this. It just...I don't think that you have a greater pulse because you're in District 3 or District whatever. The fact is, is we're all council members for this entire city, not just for our districts. So, I...you say it a lot, I don't like that we go back to our districts. It's one city, it's one breath. But if you have issues... But, um, if you have issues you want to fix, what are they? We've been talking about this since April, we've been talking about this since the beginning. Like, some hard facts ideas would be better at this point. Because do we have time to wait? Well, we don't have time to wait for good idea fairies to come dropping in. So if you have them, if you have engineers, if you have people that you want to talk to, like, we need to actually have hard facts of what it is we want to fix. Because just in Steve Linky's presentation alone, there's 17 spots just on the road, on the, on the north side of, of Santa Fe in front of the high school that need to be fixed, period. So to come in here and kind of aimlessly say that we need to fix some stuff or, you know, spotted points, some ideas of what those spotted points are would be pretty, would be pretty helpful at this point. So I'll leave it there. The diagonal parking, the diagonal parking, i- if you think of it like blinds, it's the opposite direction. If you're trying to come out of the, um, the parking lots, that say the church, and you're looking left, well, if the pole in, you know, face in parking, you can see through the cars, you can see somebody driving. When it's not, the blinds are the opposite direction. You have one Sprinter van and it kills the entire view corridor, right? Two, when you back in park, you have to be, hit the timing right if you're comfortable enough with backing in. Some people are, some people aren't. But you have to hit the timing right. You have to make sure that you have the, the blinker, you see the spot, the whole deal, and you have to get it while the person's behind you. If you want to back out from a forward parking, you can wait till as long as you're comfortable. You want to wait for 10 seconds, you want to wait for 10 minutes, you want to wait for 10 hours until the next stop light, red light at whichever light, Bonita or, um, Nardo, you can wait. You don't have to pull out when you, when you, right then. You can pull out when it is convenient for your comfort level. With the back end parking, there is no comfort level time if there's a car directly behind you. You have to do it now, you have to do it immediately. And it's just, it's not convenient. When we go into the questions for some, for the staff here, do we have a before and after crash rate rating for Santa Fe? How many crashes the two years prior, three years prior, or six months prior? Or the six months after it's been, or paused at least until now, or the 10 months at this point?
Offhand, we do not, Councilmember.
Do not? Okay, that would be, uh, if we had any, that would be great to, to know this for this presentation. How long will construction take if we were to take the most invasive of these?
Would likely be somewhere between eight and 10 months.
Eight and 10 months? And that's without coordinating with the heights, because that's just the actual work portion? So we may have to delay during graduation or something like that? So we're probably looking at more the 10-month mark, maybe 12 months due to the fact of?
If we did have to demobilize and remobilize to hit key targeted, uh, calendar schedules, it would extend the duration, correct?
Good, thank you. And one more thing I want to say before I push this on, and we'll get back around, get through the council again, is I've ma- I've met with Safe Streets Encinitas and I've talked with Judy Brofine. The, the fact is, is right now we're talking about Santa Fe, but we as council members are in charge of all of, of Encinitas. And right now, we're at a, um, a surge over the last four years since COVID of e-bikes, of people that can travel much faster than they ever could before without the power of a motor. And it's been on a, it's, 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 I want to say it's an epidemic of, of anything negative. It's just been an epidemic of, of onset of bikes that happened over the, basically overnight. We all went inside for a year, year and a half, and we came out and we had this, this explosion of e-bikes, of people that aren't necessarily prepared to ride these bikes at that speeds that they're riding. And so now, all of a sudden, we want this massive change overnight to happen throughout our city so that these e-bikes can now just make their space. Well, that would have been fine when this was only, you know, 10,000 people, 20,000 people, and we could have made those adjustments. Now with 60,000 people, we have to actually make this convenient for the entire city. And also, when you come into our city, if you're not from our city, it needs to be, the ergonomics and the, uh, intuition has to be high. You go down 101, people come in from out of town, there's signs like, like crazy, there's paint on the, the ground, there's all kinds of distractions. So you're looking for, you're talking about the distractions inside the car, but there's also distractions outside the car. Not to mention, a lot of the bikers don't necessarily wear the brightest of colors, you know, two gentlemen, little young guys here tonight, were both wearing dark colors. They go on their bike right now, get outside, I guarantee they're not putting on, you know, the glow-in-the-dark, whatever they're, they're supposed to be wearing. And so we're causing a lot more issues by, by sitting here and not talking about the global issue throughout the entirety of Encinitas, not just Santa Fe. And so we want to create a way for everybody to learn how to drive in Encinitas with a more convenient, more conducive, and more consistent bike lane and car lane ratio pedestrian setup. So if you go throughout our town, maybe 80, 90% of our town is set up with, in this case, the one that, you know, option B shows class two bike lanes from the far western portion of the west section to the far eastern portion, Evergreen, of the western section. It's a continuous type-two bike track. It's not one then the other, then this and then that. It's, it's, everybody can be consistent for that entire, whatever it is, a half mile, mile? And then when they get to Santa Fe, where we're going to improve that because of an H ship grant, that's also another piecemeal. Because we're getting money, we have to, we have to update it. What I think is lacking, I'll say this to engineering, I'll say this to mobility, is that we don't have a master plan for all of the bike lanes that we're going to put throughout the entire 19 square miles of this town. And so when we get these projects and these grants, we're forced to make a decision in a soda straw that doesn't exist with the rest of the interaction of the bikes and the cars throughout the entirety of our city. Right? So at some point, at some point, we need to have a master plan to all of these things, to how this fits in and how that grant, if it fits us, like Councilmember O'Hara said last week with regards to South Coast Highway, let's not do this wrong. It's the crown jewel of our town if it's just because of the grant. If it doesn't fit into our master plan, which we don't seem to have, and we're in a race for it because of the last four years, we don't really know what we're actually making decisions about. And the last thing I'll say before I push this on is this is a microcosm to the bigger issue. As, as Santa Fe becomes the, what I think should have probably been the last street to be done, or one of the last streets as a boulevard, again, to the major thoroughfares, to the hospital, to the high school, to these things. We put, it could have pushed the kids, like one of the gentlemen said, to the, the Melba's, to the slower streets, enforce those, get those going now. And this could have been one of the last streets that we did after slowing down our traffic throughout the city in the areas where it should be slow, in the residential spots where the cars go 25 miles an hour. If we want to go slow and speed kills, and the bikes already go 23, 25, and 28 miles an hour, respectively, why not put the bikes on the streets that already go 25 miles an hour? It's a common sense model, that's a master plan model. But right now, we're being expected to make decisions on this $3 million that was gifted to us to make these changes that inherently through this, this, um, survey showed a vast majority of our city, taking that, that survey, did not like this, this design. And it wasn't inherent, and it didn't, it wasn't, the ergonomics and the intuition was not clear. So that's what we're really making decisions about, and that's what, how I'm going to make my decision tonight. So my decision tonight is going to be surrounded around that. I think what Steve actually produced was probably the best thing. I think the, the option B with mirroring the south side of Santa Fe and mirroring the, the north side, getting, I know it's beautification, I know it's great, but as it winds through intersections with other cars, people leaving, coming into the, the high school parking lot, it, it's, it looks pretty, but it doesn't function properly. And if it doesn't function properly, there's nothing to say about the pretty. Because it, safety's, safety's the prettiest thing, right? Us people, being alive is the prettiest thing, not some pretty thing that actually creates more hazards. So I would support option B, but I would, I'd also support an option B that has a mirror image on the north side, uh, and we would get more parking spots back on the north side. So we'd probably be going from the 36 that we had to now 46, whatever it is, to probably closer to that 50 number or 55 number. Uh, I couldn't be, you know, exactly right on that, but you could now parallel park on that north side where we gain more parking and then the guy, the, the children going to San Diego could park on that side a little bit more easy and make their way to class without having to cross the street, which I think would be pertinent. So I know it's a, a lot to ask of you, staff, but, um, I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Let's see, Deputy Mayor Lyons.
So it's, um, I can see where my colleagues are standing on this. And what is evident is a fundamental difference, in my opinion, versus their opinion about some very important things. And so let me articulate those, I'll try not to take too long. There, we have a fundamental difference on what, what safer means. For example, the separate protected biker, bike lane as currently is built out there on the south side of the street is safer. And I don't believe it is the less safe option. I think that doing other things other than this are less safe. So I don't feel that we need to change that at all. So I'm being asked to articulate, well, what am I going to do about that? I'm like, it's safe as it is, it's been vetted. It's been vetted through all the experts. It's been vetted through our city, it's been vetted through permitting. It's safe as it is. The narrower, uh, the narrower street as it is built today is safer. The data supports us on that, supports me on that. To do anything different, and each of these three options do widen the street, is less safe. So I want to keep this just the way it is because that's the safest for the kids. And the kids are first, and the kids are over cars in my book. So I think also this city council majority is not listening to the public. Because I heard today, I saw in our comments, and also when we had our public meeting back in May, the majority of the people did not want us to remove half of this project and reconstruct it. And I'm going to guess, they didn't know how much it would cost then, but I'm going to guess, they are not the majority of the people, and I don't, I can't say that enough. I've heard the majority of the people say they do not want us to remove half of this project. And when they find out how much it's going to cost, they are not going to be happy that the city council didn't listen to the majority of the people in this community. So I really caution us to be careful that we don't waste almost $2 million of the taxpayers' hard-earned money because I'm just so passionate about how many other needs we have in this community. Just last week, or a couple of weeks ago, when we met in regular session, we were talking about having matching funds for the grants we were going after to get people safely across the tracks in Lucadia, in Old Encinitas, in Cardiff. We have so much need there. We're planning a new fire station in Alivenhan. We don't have the money. We need this money. We need to be fiscally responsible with this money. I just, I'm, I just can't back us taking the safe road and making it less safe and spending $2 million doing it.
Councilmember O'Hara.
The budget, the budget question is very interesting, uh, new addition for you. It's funny, I remember when, um, I came out of my hospital bed here and you wanted to go over budget and not get us on a zero budget for the entire city for the fiscal year because you wanted a historical district for a couple hundred thousand dollars. That didn't seem to bug you. Now we're talking about public safety. So, um, I, none of us balk at the price tag, not a bit. Anyone in this city who has heard about any issue with any child who's got an injury would trade $1.5 million to get rid of that injury in a heartbeat. So let's, let's get away from politics and get away from the, the pushing the fear button and the, the, these buttons that weren't there until now. I'm going to come back, I want to come back to this, this project, this road. Could you bring me up option B, please? I'm going to be looking to support option B. I'd like to do a lot of changes. I, I do, I do agree with you, Joy, on a few things. I know we agree and disagree on things, and that's a really positive, a really positive thing that happens up here. You know, I, I, I'm going to lead towards this. I, where I disagree with you is that separated bike lane, the data shows that it's safer. The, the data, if you go to Cardiff, uh, clearly shows it's not. In our own city, it's significantly more dangerous. Cyclists will tell you that the, uh, hitting one of those at any speed is a huge difference. And should something swerve in their way, they have nowhere to go or bail out and they get in accidents. That's been repeated many, many times. And so we're going to disagree there. But I do agree with you on the narrowing of the lane. So, um, I know that all the studies do say, if you can bring the road in a little bit, the narrow lane in, the visual cue of the narrower lane slows people down a little bit. We have brought the speed limit down. I, I don't, I don't think that's the thing that's been discounted in this discussion a lot, that the speed limit was brought down. It's another reason why the speed is slower out there. It's not just that the lanes are more narrow. Um, let's, again, let's spin this to what's going on here. But what I, what I would like to see, and as far as lane width goes, um, is I would, based on this design, um, I would like to see, um, if we could, um, this will be much a question for staff, anything else. I'd love, I'd love to pull those lanes in to make a compromise with the rest of the council board, because I know that most of the council board has been talking about 11-foot lanes. I'd like to move us towards 10 and a half foot lanes. Take those lanes, that, that foot added to the bike buffer to get those cyclists just a little bit farther away from the cars, for the people who are concerned about that. Then I'd like to make the parking spaces go from, I think it's 10 and a half feet on here to eight and a half feet, or basically eight, eight and a half feet. That gives us a lot of place to park. People don't have to gym themselves. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, uh, the minimum width for a parking space is seven feet, but that puts somebody right, like, right up against the curb, right?
That's correct, Councilmember. We would prefer not going down to seven feet. Eight feet is about the, the minimum that we would prefer.
So if we brought this down to eight, eight and a half feet, then we could take that foot and a half and we could add another half foot to the bike buffer and add a foot to the, to the door ding, uh, buffer, correct? Or, or add the space to the bike lane and make, or split up the half foot to each of the bike lane, the buffer and the door buffer, right?
That's correct.
So I'd love to see us do that, keep the lanes a little bit narrower. I do, I do think that, uh, you know, it is an aim, I think, of every person up here. We don't want to speed traffic up. We want speed, we want the traffic to continue to flow. Within this design, um, I'd really like to see us time the traffic lights so that at the top of Santa Fe or, uh, at Bonita, uh, speed limit, it's 20 out there currently, uh, that it is set so that if you go through that light at 20 miles an hour and you stay at 20 miles an hour, you will make the light at the bottom at 20 miles an hour. If you go 21 miles an hour, you will not, you will be stuck waiting at that light to turn green. I, I know they do that in other cities, and if there's a way we could do that. And then as a staff, to the city manager, uh, if we can do that, I would like us to see, to put out a program, work with the schools to promote that we are doing that. Because I truly believe that if the residents know, they won't have to stop if they go 20 miles an hour. They'll go 20 miles an hour because they are a lot less happy sitting in a stoplight than they are moving along. So, um, that's kind of a concerted effort between us, the schools, obviously, our engineering department. But I think that seems pretty reasonable so far. That's all stuff we could do.
It is. The one thing that I did want to mention, Councilmember, is with signal timing, absolutely agree with you of having that timing continuity between signals. How the signals do work is whenever there is a pedestrian that does activate the pedestrian push button, that unfortunately, for a couple of cycles, will take it out of, out of sync. So just, just wanted to add that.
Sure. Well, yeah, and I think to your point, I think, I think we should probably all say it up here. I think during school pickup and school drop-off, we're still going to have a little bit of all bets are off as far as if you're driving through there, uh, I think it's reasonable to expect to have to slow down, maybe even stop and obviously wait for the safest position, safest way to go through possible. And I think every resident would expect that and, and understand that. But the rest of the day, when I'm going through there at 10:00 AM or 2:00 PM or 4:00 PM, or any of us are going through there, rather, um, it seems like that should be something we might be able to, to attempt to have happen and communicate to our, our residents. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to motion to move this with those amendments, but I do want to talk more about, uh, the rest of the street because I think obviously tonight we've heard a lot more going on to it. As we do this discussion for, for, and just keep B up if you don't mind, for us in the council here, I think we're all agreed on the west side of, of this segment and the east side of this segment that we are pretty comfortable with what's up there and being proposed. So I propose to accept those as, as they are.
With maybe some, uh, some, the same kind of adjustments you're doing on this segment, we, we might want to put a little more into buffer.
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah. You know, I think, I think Councilmember San Antonio said that, something that I've referred me to speak of many times there, which is, I, this is intuitive. It's a straight shot now. Cyclists don't have to make any turns, and it's a straight line of shot. Obviously, this, this model cuts back on right hook possibilities, creates a better visibility. Really, the important part about this is now when a cyclist comes upon an incident, it's in front of them. The cyclist has to adjust to this to and stop. We can't, it's not just for cyclists to ride straight through. They have to be safe if they're out there. Vehicles now have everything, when they pull into park, they're going to pull off the main road into the space that's available, but it's in front of them. They can see where they're pulling into, and then they can back into their space. So this is, this, this keeps the flow and is a safer scenario for everybody because it keeps everything essentially in front of one of the, one of the participating parties in, in any, any, any activation or any, any incident. So, so I'm, that's my recommendation at the moment, and I'll make a motion. You guys can amend it as you go, but I figure we'd have a place to start. I do want to follow up. I don't think we have the ability to discuss this today, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff or city manager. I would like us to, to work towards putting a Class 2 bicycle lane on the north side, but I don't think that's in this discussion to be able to do right now, right?
You could.
We don't have spa, we currently don't have space for it.
We can, we can ask the city attorney to opine. I think you can.
It's generally related to the subject at hand.
Yeah, it would be redesigning Santa Fe and if that, and bike lanes, and that would include potentially modifying, putting a Class 2 up there if we wanted to.
Correct. So that gets prohibitively expensive at the moment, is, I think, going to be our problem. And so I would, I would like to stick with what's in front of us for what we're doing, but set to have a future agenda to discuss that section on the north to, to add a Class 2 bike lane and make some of the adjustments to it. Because right now, I think the way we've got this set up, we won't have 5 feet to do a, a Class 2 bike lane, correct?
No.
No, so we, we need that, so we'd have to take away the curb.
If I can interject, Councilmember Schaefer made a similar, I think Councilmember Schaefer would say, take some of that land, which is within our right of way, and you could easily do a Class 2 bike lane.
Steve had mentioned, it's 15 feet from the street to the nearest utilities, yeah.
So I would, I would say we should look at the design and the cost before we go any further than that, as far as, so I would like to have that agenda as in the future.
Is that part of your motion, or out of curiosity?
What's that?
Is that part of your motion?
No.
Okay, just checking.
I made my motion, this is, this, these are things I want to make sure that don't fall off the table tonight because I think they're important. I think we should revisit the bus stop and the possibility of moving it farther east because I, I know doing the research on bus accidents, most bus accidents, especially with schoolkids, happen from students crossing in front of the bus and then nobody seeing them and them getting hit. So I would prefer to have them come down the street to the crosswalk. Another feature that was discussed, I think we could talk about this, but I don't know, and it's certainly not the main motion. There was a great picture of a yellow rumble strip. Matt, I believe you had it up at the intersection of, was it McKinnon and Santa Fe on that southwest corner? Yeah, right there. There's a yellow, like, rumble strip that, that currently has the bike path, as, as riders go off of the street, across the intersection onto the bike path, there's a yellow rumble strip there. In my conversations with SDA, they, they were interested in having something similar to that on the sidewalk just before the driveway if possible.
Councilmember, are you referring to an?
Correct, yes, that's it.
Detectable warning?
Yeah, something like that. Or I think we discussed some sort of a striping, but I'm concerned the striping would get slick from, from what I've been reading, so. But the SDA in this would like to see something prior to that, prior to that intersection ASAP, if that makes sense.
And councilmember, just so I understand, are you talking about for the, the bicycle facility or?
Sorry, for the bicycle facility, I'm sorry, yes.
Got it, thank you.
In, in our discussion with them, that, that's been something that they've mentioned. And then in the future, and I know this is not in the purview tonight, too, but I do think for the office building at the top of, or rather, the eastern end on the south side of the street, I'd like us to review timed parking for the, I, I don't believe we can do dedicated spaces based on what I'm reading in our codes, but I do believe we can put a set of timed parking up there to help that business with its turnover so that those spaces don't get occupied all day in a relevant amount of time that they can get their patients in and out, but also so that people using other facilities in that area won't occupy them too long. So I think I've touched a lot of this road. I've made a motion. I don't want those other things to fall off, so I'm glad I got them on record, but I'm going to yield for the moment. Thank you.
Okay. And I will second your motion for option B. I support, I, for discussion, there are probably some modifications I would make to that, too. First, I want to, I want to address Councilmember Lyons, or Deputy Mayor Lyons. Safety is number one. I agree. I completely agree. But it's, I differ in her opinion of what's safe, what's not safe. I think in a previous testimony, Steve Leakey provided us some pretty, pretty significant information about separated bike lanes and how the studies have been done, and that they look at just the clear, the non-intersections, and they look at only the car-on-bicycle accidents. They do not look at bicycle-on, on curb. They don't look at bicycle-on, on pedestrian. And he had, had done some analysis of, too bad you didn't share it tonight, Steve, but he had shared with us some analysis of South 101 before and after the curbs went in, and augmented data, not just the police reports, but also the emergency room reports to show that when a car wasn't involved, the only time the police throws an incident is when a car is involved. But if a bicyclist hits the curb and falls and we had a death when, when somebody hit that, or when a bicyclist hits a pedestrian, those don't always show up. But they do show up at the emergency room if, if they're serious enough. And what he showed was, for the several years before versus the several years after the curbs went in, the accident rate went up, and I want to say 53% or something like that. He went a step further. He looked at the northern portion where we didn't change and compared before and after the same time periods, and showed that 101 between, I think Chesterfield up to, towards Swamis, did not change, and it did not have the curbs and that treatment. And I thought that was pretty damning evidence towards the curbs and having physical obstacles, pedestrians, and, and also, he, he basically took apart several of the, several of the research. We had one, one person saying, well, all the research points to separated bike lanes are better. Not necessarily. Certainly not on that, on the data I'm seeing from there. And again, I'm data-driven decision-making, so. And my goal is to make it safer, and I do not believe what we implemented, what we designed and implemented on the south side of, of Santa Fe is safer. I don't know that I'm yet to the point I'm ready to get rid of the north side. I think it needs fixing, it needs straightening. So now I'm going to go through the, the issues that the specification, if you will, and I'm going to hit it at a pretty high, fast level. First of all, I want to maintain speeds at or under our speed limits, and we did lower the speeds. So whether we have to do something special with automated speed cameras, I don't know. There, there are ways to fix that other than making it so narrow. We've talked earlier, or we, it's been discussed, and I think it's a fantastic idea, and I've talked to staff about this. We need a, a master design manual for bike lanes, really. Bike lanes and how we paint and how we use green paint. I've talked to staff about this. First question I would have is, what's the standard width of a lane for an arterial? Not for a local, for an arterial. And I would argue 11 feet. And again, if I showed you pictures, you would see 10 and 1/2-foot wide trucks passing each other, and they usually have to be well out of the lane. That's not going to work. You can't build an arterial that way, and this is an arterial in our circulation element. So maintain the speeds, and I would, I would stick with the 11 feet here, maybe a 10 and 1/2 on the center. I can go with that, or even maybe 10. But what I'm seeing is people aren't necessarily slowing down for that, and I really appreciated Councilmember O'Hara's comment. We lowered speed limits, too, and you can't just say that the narrowing did it. We also lowered speed limits. Consistency for drivers and bicyclists. What, the constant comment I get, and by the way, we all meet with different people. I meet with people all over the city constantly, people that are involved, people that are not involved. And I always end the conversation, no matter what we're talking about, I have been asking for, since what, April, what do you think of Santa Fe? Resoundingly, majority say, I hate it. Resoundingly. And that's not people that are, live on Santa Fe, that's people who use it, who know it. I, I get feedback, I don't agree with Deputy Mayor Lyons, that the vast majority love what's done there. I think if we took a survey, oh, wait, we did. We took a survey and 900 out of 1,000 hated the backend parking, as one example out of that survey. So I don't believe there's popular support. I would, I would draw an analogy to L7, that the last council thought there was support, popular support for that. I would argue, we're sitting up here, at least half the reason is the L7 position. It changed the council. And if I'm wrong on this, then I won't be sitting here in two years, so, so be it. So let's get back to the spec I like to see in this hypothetical or hopefully future design manual. Consistency for drivers. That means it's intuitive. When you're driving up to it, you know where you need to be, and you don't, you minimize the zigzagging, right? On an arterial. On a local, I'm all for narrow, I'm all for traffic calming. Declutter signs. What I have noticed going around town is that there are so many signs that I spend more time looking at all the different signs and not at the pedestrian or the bicyclist that I should be focusing on. And I actually think it would be safer with less signs. So we take out the unneeded signs. Likewise, design intersections consistently and mark them consistently. And what I look at is I look at going into Solana Beach, I go into Carlsbad, and they're fairly consistent, and they're fairly consistent with where we've ended up. And we've ended up with, and they use the same thing, travel lane, buffer, bike lane, door guard, parking, or a curb, right there, you know? In the case of Vista, they took out the berm on their buffered bike lane, right? They took it out, right after they put it in, immediately after they put it in. So we're not alone in this, kind of figuring out as, as we go. And so moving on, I would make sure whatever we do this time, we consult with the post office. I believe we've consulted with the San Diego Academy. The previous design absolutely missed the post office, and that's not a political statement. They just said it's unsafe to deliver to the 14 houses, and they refused to. I think we have a solution there. We move them to their, their box. Emergency vehicles. I said this already, but we have to make room to pull over or free the center lane so that emergency vehicles can get through under all conditions, including pickup, drop-off. I think that, that going to the type 2, what is it, Class 2 bike lane on one side would give enough room to pull over, because you can pull into a bike lane for an emergency. It would be obviously even better if we had it on both sides, but I think the price tag, I agree with your comment, the price tag is going to be too much. And so again, improve, you know, don't remove. So I'm not removing the northern in my, in my mind, but I'm removing the southern with the option 2. Let's see. Here's, here's a big one. We haven't talked a whole lot today, and, and I don't have as much data on this other than talking to people and actually going out and talking to the traffic guards, the crossing guards in front of Ocean Knoll. And that is, do not divert traffic from Melba, Benita, and Nardo. One of the reasons, I believe, based on anecdotal data, not hard data, but anecdotal data says we're sending more cars down Melba, and it's making it more dangerous. So if you look, if, and I've got, one of the pictures I have is of the bicycle corral that's on the southeast corner of SDA. There's probably 200 bikes in there. Each time I've been out there, whether it's pickup or drop-off, in the front of the school on Santa Fe, I see no more than 10 bicycles using the bike lanes plus the road. And by the way, it's usually split half and half, with about half of them out in the travel lane, just riding without helmets or whatever, and half of them on that. But very few of the kids actually use the bike lane immediately in front of the school. Why? They come out on the very south end, and they get just past the football field to Nardo, and then they go down Nardo or wherever they're going. On the north end, they don't even bother to get on that 200 bikes that you see in that, that bike corral. I've got pictures of them going straight across on Windsor, right? Or they go head back towards Melba. Most of the, the students are doing exactly what, what Luke, you, you recommend. We want to get them on the slower speed roads. What we've done is we're forcing more traffic over there. That's wrong. That's less safe. And so I think by widening the travel lanes back to 11 and having a standard policy, a standard design manual that says arterials will go down to 11 feet, and I could take the center lane at 10 feet maybe, I won't have most of the trucks driving in the center lane, which is, which is wrong. We just can't, got to stop that. Eliminate the right hooks. I talked about, I think, you know, we've got the seven, seven right hooks there. I think we heard evidence to that. And this is the point where I will stop. We're talking about up to $2 million, probably by the time everything's said and done. How much will one lawsuit cost us? One lawsuit will blow away 1 to 2 million, so two lawsuits. I, I believe that this is far cheaper than having lawsuits. Again, the goal is to make everything more safer. Improve it, remove some of it, but maybe not all of it. Parking, you know, the parking is flawed. You can't get out of these diagonal parking, these backend diagonals. You either literally walk past the front of your car and you are in the 10-foot travel lane. So elderly that can't make the hike over the pebbles and the 10 inches, they're going to have to go out that way. That's ridiculous. Or you saw the pictures from the dentist where the patient was having trouble going over that? That, that's not a design. And we've cut little slots in, or not, I'm sorry, we didn't cut slots. We took out the pebbles. We still have the 10-foot, the 10-inch climb out of there. I, that, that and the fact that the backend parking is so wildly unpopular, you know, and, and then the final one was somebody mentioned, and I have a great picture because I saw a mini, not a minivan, a Sprinter van immediately south, sorry, west of Bobby Riggs. You literally can't see traffic until the nose of my car would be in traffic by the time I can see any traffic around a car. So parking, I talked about. The separated bike lane as it's implemented, remember I talked about good design, good implementation? This is a horribly implemented bike lane. The, the, it's, the, calling it 6.5 feet wide is really kind. It's really about 4 and 1/2 feet wide because the gutter, and by the way, it sloped at about 10% across, which the guideline for those should be like 2 to 3%. So you're tilted down, nobody's riding in the concrete gutter, so they've got this smaller area, and then you have to take into account, somebody said their truck, I've got pictures of vans, their bumpers are 6 inches into the actual bike lane. The guidelines for bike lanes is you should have not only the full 7-foot width, you should have a clearance vertical area so that handlebars don't hit it for another foot beyond that. We're violating that and we're impeding into it. So I, we didn't change the grade of the road, and the entire grade of the road to do this properly should have been graded flat in this section and, and put the gutter where the, where the berm is now, if you were going to do it and do it right. So I think the separated bike lane that we implemented was poorly designed, poorly implemented. Let's see. Eastbound, the eastbound separated bike lane. I think there's areas that we have to rip it up. The first thing I would do is I'd put white stripes down both sides because at night, nobody's going to see when they're going into the mulch, and I think it's dangerous. I think everywhere else I've been, those kind of meandering bike lanes, they're very clearly marked typically with a center line. This is one way, so you probably wouldn't have the center line, but I would put white lane, or white lines. I'm going to get back to the, the design of the 51 home intersection. I think, I don't know if the timing can work out. Obviously, I don't want to dig this up twice. I would just want to understand if we work with development services and figure out when they might hit there. What I don't want to do is design What I don't want to do is design something that's, what's what I'm looking for, unaware or uninformed by the future that has to be there, that's going to be there. So whatever we do, we should make it so that it, you know, I will constantly ask every, every one of these meetings, and tonight is not the design, tonight is the big direction of where we're going. Let's talk about the eastbound shero. So if we weren't to get rid of, if we were to leave the shero on the eastbound as it is designed today, we can have mechanical bikes going up that hill at five miles an hour. I don't know, maybe if you're an Olympic athlete faster, but that's going to technically slow down traffic. What I've seen, and I have pictures, is that cars just swerve around the people. Well, the shero's not working then. That's not a shero. So why don't we have a bike lane immediately adjacent that gives a buffer and room for those people to go up that hill? Oh, that's precisely what option B is. So that's why I support option, that's one of the reasons I support option B. Let's see. When we talk about the 51 unit subdivision, I want to make sure that we've taken into account the future SDA traffic flow, and that's where we talk to SDA, and we have very detailed discussions. Today, they have two lanes in. I have multiple pictures of cyclists, because they're not on the bike lane, remember? They're coming down in traffic, they loop in on the left side of the cars on the right side. Not once, not twice, I see it all the time. And then they go meandering through the parking lot with all the cars. That is less safe. The way we have implemented this design is far less safe. We talked about the bus stop, I'm good. The right turn queuing area on Nardo, I, I think I would consider giving a right turn queue there and taking away that, that big area. I think we, we made it very hard, and I would like to hear from our fire, because when I've talked to them, they said they can't make that right-hand turn without going into the oncoming lane on Nardo. And we already know how narrow Nardo is. Bobby Riggs entrance, it is too narrow. It prevents simultaneous entry and exit. We need to correct that. I even heard tonight from Venture, they have the same problem. So whatever we do, and I believe going to this class two bike approach will greatly solve this, but we need to make sure there's enough room there for proper entrance and exit. I talked about that. Trash can locations, I want to explicitly plan on where the trash cans go, especially west of Nardo and lane width. I keep going back, when I talk lane width, I go back to North 101. What did we do there? How did it work there? It worked well with the buffer, and, and the vast majority are exactly what we're proposing here. We already, I believe, well, we will fix the speed table at SDA's entrance, and the loose rocks are problematic, they have to go away regardless. So, and last but not least, the RRFB, it's more sign pollution, but what, what I really notice is nobody even sees them when they get up close, they can't even see if they're still going. And that's why the sooner we get to a controlled intersection, a red light, crosswalk intersection, the safer our kids will be, safer our parents going there, the safer our staff that almost got hit when they were out there with the RRFB. And I have pictures of that, too. It, it's, that, that's my input, I think I didn't say anything too different than what, what you said. And I will yield to Councilmember San Antonio. Sorry for going long.
Thank you. I just had a quick question about, I spoke with Gigi Brolfin, and she mentioned something about, you know, the Swamis kind of speed bump or rumble strip to separate, or to let you know you're coming to a bike lane? Do you know what I'm talking about? It's like that little speed hump or...
Unfortunately, Councilmember San Antonio, I don't know specifically which one you're referring to, but...
Coming out of Swami's parking lot, crossing into the turn lane from the parking lot or into, it's like a little raised...
A rumble strip.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think I know exactly now what you're talking about.
Is that specifically used for, is there a specific use or only use for that? Or can you put it at like the exit or the entrance of one of these, you know, at the driveways, letting them, just to slow people down from, I guess, essentially using the limit line or however they get out of there? Is that, is that a possibility, or is that something that's not really used that way?
Typically wouldn't be used that way, that's something that we can investigate.
I just, that was just a question, I just, I, I thought it was interesting, I, I've noticed it when I've come out of Swamis, and I never really thought about it as in use in any part of the city, but considering this, you know, slows people down coming out to the bike lane or, you know, cars, I just thought about it, so I just thought I'd ask.
Right, and, and what we do have in some of these driveway locations for the exits, there are a couple of locations that we did install speed bumps in the driveway.
Okay.
They're actually a request of, of the, those properties, and, and that has worked well, but again, it has to be a request of that property.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, we, we'll take a look at your suggestion as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Motion to extend.
Oh, thank you. Well, I was hoping, I was hoping we'd get done, but anybody...
I know this crew too well, motion to extend.
To, did, did you want to put a time certain on that?
Yeah.
You might get a faster second.
2:00 AM, no.
No.
11:00 PM. I think we'll be done well before then, but just so we get, let's get this done tonight. We don't want to come back and do this.
I say 10:30, I don't, I think we've gotten to the end of it, I think, for the most part. So I'll say 10:30.
We, and, is the motion maker okay with the 10:30?
I am, but don't say I told you so.
I think that is yes. And so we have a motion and a second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and was the second for 10:30, by the way?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll call a question, this is a little housekeeping, sorry.
Okay, so, all right, so I didn't get his last name, but Adam, who lived on Melba, really hit on something, and earlier in this discussion or this, this, our, our talking up here, Councilmember Schaefer also circled back to something we've talked about. And I want to introduce this idea, because while it isn't specific to Santa Fe, it affects Santa Fe, and it very much affects, one of the big concerns is the students on Santa Fe. So I want to thank Adam, and I apologize for not getting your last name, for coming up here, talking about this idea of, let's get our students at all schools, but starting at Santa Fe in this discussion, on the correct streets. The streets that, that don't encourage them to interact with cars, lower the risk of having an interaction with a car. And so to that point, I would like to, and ideally maybe start with, start with Santa Fe, Santa Fe and San Diego Academy, to develop what I think should be part of our master plan down the road, but I think this is, this is the opportunity to start, and the moment is right, to start looking at safe routes for school, and actually defining those safe routes for school. And I'll tell you what I mean, and I am by no means attached to this concept, this is just to explain how it would work. Currently, right now, if you are taking your bicycle from Swamis, you get your surfboard on, you're going to school, you're coming up the hill, you get to the roundabout, and then you have to go by the hospital with emergency vehicles, you have to go by the Von shopping lot, you have to go by two highway exits and entrances where there has been a death of a student, and then you have to navigate up, up Santa Fe to the high school and through the intersection. How great would it be if when you got to that roundabout, instead of going through that, navigating that gauntlet to the high school, there was next to the white line on, oh, the, what is it, on Rubenstein, thank you, the white line on Rubenstein, there was a purple line. And that purple line went all the way next to the white line, all the way to the school to an entrance that isn't on Santa Fe. And it was, the cars recognized it, we marked it as, this is how you know you're on a safe route to school. The students recognized it and they followed the state, the safe route to and from school. We got them off of Santa Fe. We give parents a guideline for their kids.
Okay.
We're proactive.
You, you might be just on the edge of off topic for the night.
I know, so, but it is, I preempted it with is it and isn't, it is, it is because, it is because we're talking about Santa Fe still.
I agree, to the degree you connect it to Santa Fe.
So, and that's why I would like to start with SDA. And so I'd like to, if we can tonight, or if we can agenda it for the next meeting, set up, putting together a subcommittee to explore this. I'm sure our safe street partners would love to get involved, I'm sure we have community partners who'd like to get involved, they'd love to get SDA involved, any of the school districts as we move forward with this. So, I don't know if we can...
I think we should just have it here, have, why a subcommittee? Why not, I think we all have good ideas, I think the public's got good ideas.
I think they do, but I think, I think we need to get a project to put in front of people first, and I think that the, the invested partners in the community, the parents, people who live in these neighborhoods, obviously the, the...
So staff.
Council and schools.
To the degree, to the degree that safe routes to school per se is not on the agenda tonight, I would feel better if we brought this back either as a council-initiated item in order to agenda as a subcommittee.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, and, and so if you, if that's fine, let's go that route?
Certainly.
Okay. Will we talk offline, whether we just get it directly onto the future agenda and then take it to that next step?
I think that'd be great, and I think that would really help a lot of the conversation across the city with this as some sort of a starting pilot program. Outside of that, I'm, I'm going to talk about that lane width issue real quickly with you, Mayor. The, as I understand it, the preferred width for the middle lane, that, that turn lane is 11 feet.
I would say 11 feet would be minimum. I, I will defer to our deputy fire chief, because that is a, for Santa Fe in this location, we do have a little bit... There, there is no other ability for a emergency vehicle to, to use a lane aside from potentially the center lane, so...
Yeah, this is just to get confirmation, and thank you for stepping up the microphone.
Thank you. Yeah, so, the, the question is 11 feet for the center lane, correct?
Correct, yes.
That would be, 11 feet would be ideal across all three lanes for the fire department. And the reason I share that is, our fire engine, specifically the one located in Cardiff, for example, it is 10 feet, 2 inches wide, mirror to mirror. So that gives us a little bit of a buffer within that lane. 10 feet would be, it is already tight, but the 11, 11 feet gives us a little bit of wiggle room, and then having the flexibility of the design that you guys are proposing with the bike lanes to the right and left of those lanes also allows for vehicles to pull over safely and give us the room to move to the left and bypass vehicles while on an emergency response.
So if we kept that at 11, and we brought the other lanes to 10 and 1/2, again, to, to count Deputy Mayor Lines' point, and a lot of the public has pointed out, narrowing lanes helps with our challenge of speed, and just trying to balance things out here, would we be able to do a 10 and 1/2, 11, 10 and 11 being the center lane, and 10 and 1/2? Would that be something we could do for the fire department? We're going to have buffers on both sides and...
That is something that would be achievable, absolutely.
And could we stood that for the fire department? I heard, I heard you say you need the full 10 feet, but that would give you not quite as much feet, space, but more feet and...
You said full 11 feet.
Right. I would, I would lean to the more favorable route of 11-foot lanes for the fire department.
Okay. Well, I, then I guess that's, that's that.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope, I still would lean towards cutting the parking down to 8 and 1/2 feet and taking that space and adding it to the buffer, door buffer and the, the bike.
Deputy Mayor Lines.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara, I liked your idea about the safe routes to school and look forward to that dialogue. But I do want to say that, in addition, I think that it's our job here to make sure all of our routes are safe for all of our users. And so I say that in regards to what I'm hearing my colleagues propose for Santa Fe, and what I am understanding is we, by doing this, we will be changing the focus of this roadway away from pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements and making it vehicular-centric. And that's not a small deal. That has some ramifications to the funding that it's received, and also to the coastal development permit. So I'm just calling that out in the public, saying it...
What makes it less safe for pedestrians?
Hey, let, hey, let her finish.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was done, I was next to the queue, I thought she was done, I apologize.
I don't think she was.
I think the data shows, and I'm always focused on data, that the, what we're taking away from this project, the separated bike lanes and the reduction, we're, we're adding wider lanes, is less safe for bicycles. And, you know, I added pedestrians, but it's less safe for bicycles, and that's the funding. And I think that's valid, I think that's relevant. It's, it's something that the city will have to wrestle with when it looks at what the costs of this project will be.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
You said less safe for pedestrians. What is less safe for pedestrians?
My point was, this is a project that's been funded and approved and permits because it's a bike and pedestrian safety project, that's what it's called.
You just said, I am data-driven on safety. What data are you producing currently that says that it is not safe if we make these changes for pedestrians?
I don't think that's relevant to my comment.
It's what you said.
I'll stand down.
That's it, I, I, it would be a very different discussion if there were evidence being put forth in this discussion. So I, I just, I don't need to say much more, there's no evidence to support it.
I think my comment was already addressed.
That's okay.
So I'll address two things there. First, the CDP, and if staff, whether it's development services or engineering, probably development services, the status of the CDP approval and any change on the, for option B, since that's what we seem to be homed in on, what are the, what's the impact to the current approved CDP?
Absolutely. And we have Scott Drapkin, who's the Director of Development Services with us here to my right, who will help assist with that information.
Good evening, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Scott Drapkin. The requirements for the coastal development permit are excluded, primarily because the works within the roadway prism. So when construct, transportation agencies and local jurisdictions are allowed exemptions, actually exclusions from coastal development permits, when they stay within the, primarily and generally the existing developed or constructed right-of-way. So in this situation, I've confirmed with the engineering department that the options all include right-of-way improvements within the roadway prism pursuant to the coastal development, our city's local coastal program and the coastal act. So the permits actually excluded, so that means we don't, we're not required to get a permit.
Okay, great. And regarding the funding, and this really isn't a question, this, this really comes down to, and as I've said, if you believe, if the, the current council believes something is not properly designed or executed, how long do we have to wait after something's built to fix it? And, and I can answer that question. We don't have to wait at all. Prior councils cannot bind our actions at all. And if we believe if the council majority, elected by the majority of the people, have a different opinion than the previous council, and think that's a good use of money to avoid multimillion-dollar lawsuits potentially, then the funding is the funding. And so I'm, I have no worries about either one of those, I think we're on perfectly firm grounds. So with that, I don't see any other speakers. So we have a motion and a second, can I call a question? Anybody? I got one thumbs up. Do we have anything else, Luke?
I just wanted to make sure that, and I don't know if this is the right time, or if we need to bring back an initiated item or another agenda item, to have a comprehensive master plan for all mobility, whether it be everything. I'm not sure if it's, it's part of this or if it's a, a separate...
Let's bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I'm, I'm supportive of it, absolutely. So we got a motion and a second, and if we can call the question.
And just to clarify, for 11-foot travel lanes all around?
Yep.
As per the fire, and then going down to the 8 and 1/2 foot parking, correct?
Yeah. And, and ultimately, all the details, when we get into the design phase, we'll be back here, and we know there'll be comments, questions, tweaks. It, it wouldn't...
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. This is, is a high-level concept of the direction to move forward. And council will see this project at probably a minimum of two more times before construction could potentially move forward.
Okay, very good.
Motion carries 4 to 1 with Deputy Mayor Lines voting no.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda? I don't think so, right? I think just adjournments. So we are adjourned.